Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I know we still have a few people signing in, but we're gonna go ahead and get started here. First, I want to thank everyone for coming. It's obvious that you have a strong interest, and interest in our city, and interest in your own neighborhood, and I appreciate everyone coming out and all of your input. We've received quite a bit of input, as you can probably imagine, but we do appreciate all of it, sir. Will you call the roll, please?
Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkle?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Here.
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move visitor comments up to after the clerk's report.
Uh, we're not gonna amend the agenda. We're going with the agenda just as it is. We've had public opinion on this, we've had public openings on this. Kenny, you're breaking a protocol here. It's a council rule for us. So, we are first-
We change the agenda all the time, Mayor.
What's the- Martina, please define, please define, Martina, the council protocol.
Accepted during public hearings, visitor comments, agenda time, and at other times as allowed by the presiding officer. So, it's the mayor's.
And who does the body not have the ability to amend the agenda?
Through the rules, it's the presiding officer, which is the mayor.
So, how have we done it before?
He's asked for a vote before.
We're not gonna change the agenda. We're gonna go forward as it is. We've had, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of public- We've had a lot of public input, we advertised it, and- Order, please. Folks, there's a lot of folks here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that y'all conduct yourselves as you have before when you come in, and it's not a time to start yelling in shout, please. Greg? They've had the opportunity, they just didn't come. No, no one's getting kicked out, okay? But what I want everyone to understand is, it's a, this is a process. And we, and we've given the process. We, we do advertise. We advertise all of our meetings. And it's, you know, I mean, I can't come to your house and tell ya when to come. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is, we were gonna have a special presentation tonight, and we are gonna have to move that to the next meeting. The person that was getting the presentation, uh, work issue, couldn't make it tonight. So, we're gonna kick that down the road. And the next item is our clerk's report.
I'll move her proof.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve as written, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that unanimous.
Move her proof.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve as written, second by Mr. Henning, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show that unanimous. Okay, we're going on to old business, and this is the first of two readings. It's the first ordinance, will you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance O- oh five twenty-three oh eight. An ordinance adopting, rejecting-
Hold, hold up, Paul.
The ordinance would move to, and a vote to unpave it.
There are motions to unpave all the issues, the ordinance? Motion by Mr. Bachman, second by Mr. Lieberman to unpave all, all in favor?
Aye.
No? Another roll call, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
No.
Gorman? Merkle?
Yes.
Kelly? And Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. There's an ordinance, there's an case. I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt you there. Will you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance O- oh five twenty-three oh eight. An ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the specified conditions, the application of Clayton property's roof peak doing business as Arbor Homes, for a changing zoning from Rural Conservation District Two, RCB Two, to Plan Development District, PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for forty-two point nine-nine acres of property located along both from Union Road and Haber Road, bearing parcel ID number N sixty zero three, and Route Number Six, and Route Number Zero Nine, to be called Salem Springs within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As everyone here is aware, after the past two meetings, and specifically after the last workshop, with City Council, the applicant went back to his design team, and they did put together a new plan. That new plan for Salem Springs is on the screen in front of everyone. Just some quick details, and then I'm gonna invite Paula to speak, or to answer any questions that you guys may have, in terms of him being the applicant. The original preliminary plans did have a hundred and sixty-one homes listed on the conceptual plan with minimums, uh, lot width of fifty-two feet. After the Plan Commission's recommendation to City Council that they approve this particular project with a minimum of sixty-foot width, the applicant did bring forward a new conceptual plan that showed, it went down to a hundred and fifty-five homes being shown on the conceptual plan with a minimum lot width of sixty-foot. After the last workshop, the applicant did go back with his design team, and today he's proposing, they are proposing, this new conceptual plan that is showing it's down to a hundred and twenty-five homes, which is a reduction of almost forty homes, which was the major question at the Plan Commission meeting, and minimum lot sizes of sixty-five feet. There are several lots within this development that go up to seventy-five feet. They have also increased the green space along the eastern border, along Iron Gate, and those are taken in all the comments that were brought before City Council, and City Council gave the applicant at the last workshop. So, that is a new conceptual plan before you. I'm gonna invite Paula up. If you guys have any questions for him, specific to this conceptual plan, he'll be happy to answer them.
Jack, just for the new residents here, could you please just state why we have to, why it'd have to be rezoned, PDD as opposed to RSD?
So, plan development is an option in the zoning code for rezoning. The plan development district is an option for any type of zoning district in order to give the developer and the city flexibility for particular things, such as open green space, sidewalks, particular community amenities. When you ask for a request for a rezoning to a plan development, what, you have, there's a two, there's a multiple step process. The first step is going before preliminary plan application and a rezoning. At that particular part of the process, City Council, Plan Commission, City Council, here's a case, they determine if the property is to be rezoned, and if they approve the preliminary plan. At that particular step of the process, that's not a final approval or anything along those lines. That just gives the developer some sense that City Council is on board with, with the conceptual plan, and that they are able to move forward with the property being appropriately rezoned, so that they can begin doing their due diligence, meeting, traffic studies, stormwater studies, geotech, all those different types of things that are very costly, that usually go over six figures in cost. That gives the developer the opportunity and the information to move forward with a final development plan. That final development plan will then come before Planning Commission and City Council once again, and there is public meetings for that particular step of the process. This is just the first step of the entitlement process in terms of the developer getting the property rezoned, and getting an understanding if the conceptual plan meets the needs of City Council. I will also say, whatever final development plan is approved, that particular plan has to be followed to a T. Any change or alteration to that final development plan is considered a plan modification, and has to come back before the Plan Commission and the City Council's part of the process. So, if a property is rezoned, Plan Development District, whatever, you know, if it's Plan Development District, residential, Plan Development District, industrial, whatever, they cannot begin construction until a final development plan is submitted to Plan Commission and City Council, and that final development plan is approved. No project, no dirt can be moved, nothing can move forward until a final development plan is submitted and is approved by Plan Commission and City Council. Any alteration to an approved final development plan does come back, again, to Plan Commission, City Council for a plan modification. And if there is a proposed change, they cannot move forward with that change unless that plan modification is approved. Are there any other questions for myself?
Anything else from Mr. Coons here?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we reject the proposal.
Seconda. Well, I'd like to have a discussion first, before we take any motions. Martina, how does that work, if we have a motion and a seconda? Can we have a roll call, please?
Bachman?
No.
Sorry, Bachman, no. Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkle?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
No.
And Stevens?
No.
Are there any questions for, for the applicant?
Anything else?
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. After our last meeting, we went back and worked through this plan, and came up with what we think is a reasonable solution. As Jack indicated, we reduce the lot count to a hundred and twenty-five lots. A hundred of those would be sixty-five foot, and the majority of the other ones are, again, up to seventy-five feet or greater than that sixty-five foot. This is a plan that we think, um, we listened to a lot of the comments we had. We created a greater distance between the back of the houses, Fountainhead Drive, which runs parallel to Haber Road, hoping to give a little more distance between the road and the residence on the other side there. Those lots are now, I believe, a hundred and fifty feet deep, or before we had them about a hundred and twenty feet deep. Increase the open space, and again, everything we've talked about in the past to the next level, if we can get this approved, would be all those engineering studies and geotechnical stormwater, and all those things that will come back with a strong final development plan and proven plans that would be put up to the Council and, or Planning Commission and Council for their review and approval. This is just, like we said, the next step. We think this is a, a good solution and a good way to, to bring this to the next step. So, happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. With all the property available for development in the city of Clayton, why would you pick one in the middle of the farmland?
This property was available for-
And, I mean, I, I assume in your business, you hear as much about urban sprawl as we do as council people. And, and I don't know, you might be in favor of it, sir, but you're probably the one of, one of the five in this room that's in favor of it.
The property was for sale, there's utility availability on this property, and for us, we believe it makes sense for development.
Out, out in the middle of nowhere? On, on country roads?
I wouldn't say it's out in the middle of nowhere, sir.
Well, what's in the middle of?
Please.
I, I, I respect your opinion, I don't know that I can answer you.
I mean, I've been out there a dozen times since this whole thing started, or more.
We, we beli- We believe it's an appropriate land for development.
Any other questions or comments? I actually have a couple. I, I wanna just make sure we're clear on a couple things. So, we talked about the, the water study, traffic studies, the geo-studies, things like that. So, how will, how will we know what's, the council and the staff know what's going on? And how will the residents know what, you know, what phase we're in here?
Really, the-
Assuming that we go forward.
The thing that you're gonna physically see, I mean, there'll be additional surveying, there'll be some additional geotech. That's only you're gonna physically see happening on the site. The rest of it is, you know, office work with our engineers and so forth. But when we come back with those plans we submit through staff, all of those reports should be included in addition to the, to planning itself.
And if, if, I may add, so that's all the staff's responsibility, is that our engineer, what we do is, our engineer will work with staff. We create a whole list of things that they have to do in order to submit, um, time to work. You know, process in terms of, you know, submitting information to us, that we do reviews and submit comments and questions and requests and kind of- When we submit the final, the final development plan, we get that staff, all that information will be provided to the information City Council and the photograph, and we do one of them.
Will we have, will we have that on the website, or is that something, I mean, do we publish it that way, or make it available that way? I, I, what I, what I don't want is people have to come here and look at it.
It's just what it is, and we can get options of that information, they have copies, and it's in the, um, we talk about a lot of information, that we can, we send that out to, you know, sometimes to local authorities, and, 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 and-
The package that we submit is this process, usually will Salem Springs, Clayton, Ohio, that's there, on the, not on your website.
The, the, the update with, the current package, the new package. So, another question I have, so, let's just say one, some of those studies, or any of those studies comes back, let's say the traffic study comes back, and, and it says, you know, there's, it's too much, too many people for this, for this road, you know, for, for any of the roads out there, we can't handle this. I mean, what happens then?
I don't think it would say something like that, it would say, in order to do, excuse me-
Please.
In, in order to proceed on this project, these things need to be done, and the city can choose whether that's something they won't accept. There's also a level, I mean, frankly, if it comes in and says there's a million dollars of road improvements needed, we're not gonna proceed on projects.
Right.
I mean, there's, it's a balance, it's something that we have to look at. Again, the first step is to get this approval, so then we start that next step, and each step will come along the way. And again, this is a big step, and, and cost to us, and Jack indicated it could be a hundred thousand dollars. It's more like, if we go through that full, uh, engineering and everything else, it's probably more like three hundred thousand dollars for our next step and, and that type of stuff. Now, there's incremental steps along the way that we will look at, and whether you all are directly involved with it or not, maybe when we get back a study and something comes back where it would be negative, we might just say that we won't cable this stuff. But, we don't really anticipate this, but we anticipate reasonable approaches. The traffic study's probably the biggest bogey in the room, but the geotechnical and the, and the stormwater is all things that are normal to process and view through these processes. Again, a lot of that, there are a lot of, the tension was talked about, the, the stormwater, both on Haber Road and on Iron Gate. And those are all with, that property has no stormwater improvements whatsoever. So, I think this is just kind of run wild, for like, whether it comes to whether we're positionable or controlling this stuff.
Was the Planning Commission given the geotechnical information? Have we seen the geotechnical information?
And we talk to them about that before we even get to a point that an application is filed. Um, we have a very open door policy with the schools, um, so they have been supported. Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to address building closure because I don't know what North County Schools has planned in terms of realignment of schools. I, I don't know that, and that's left for the schools. But what they have told us is that they are for their pro-development, and they want more families in the school district. There's more schools, more children in the school district, and it's beneficial for the North County Schools.
Please, folks. Okay, is there any other questions or comments for either gentleman?
Well, I guess to my standpoint, and I know it's concerning everyone else, it's basically voiced one time or another enough in the past couple of meetings. But looking at this, I mean, I have my own personal opinion and thoughts, and I have to separate my own personal opinions from, you know, the facts, the black and white part of things. The one part I am concerned about is, you know, the need for this to be done. Is, is there a need for this development? And, well, let me finish. And the reason I'm asking is, you know, you hear in other communities, other developments taking place, it'll be Hoover Heights, Van Delia, Brookville, other places, this development's going in. And, you know, a lot of people are moving in places, but they're leaving someplace behind. And, and, you know, I'm not trying to solve someone else's problem, but I don't want this potential area to become what Hoover Heights had in the past, where they located development area, uh, the North Clayton Development, which that day can, for a period of time, the, the economy affected that. And the old time persons, older persons in the community remember Newfield and Detroit, you know, things that were promised and then never kind of went through fruition and kind of set around as an asshole. You know, how, how can we be assured that something like this would not become a biggie inherent?
Well, the history of our companies, we've always completed projects and some stuff. And, and we have been built around that obtainable level of home. Uh, low incomes, we're not super high in it. We have a builder and a developer who's a single entity. We're there to finish that project. When you have a developer that comes out with a vision and a plan and is trying to get two or three projects, we're just on the bottom. We have a success story, we have a lot of operations, we have a block of Ohio, we have a building doing that. And we came in, and that's not your city, but we came in Union Springs, and we finished a project that sat there for a long, long time, uh, not completed. We're doing the same thing with Concord Meadows. Uh, we started now Hunter's Path, where we're not the developer on, where we bought the lots. We were, uh, actually, we had ten homes sold there, just over here a couple hours ago, and four houses started. So that momentum's there. The need's there. People are buying our homes. And, you know, if we didn't think that people would buy these homes, you know, roughly, this is going to be about, you know, if, if we do our average, and right now, our, our average is pushing up more like a hundred, uh, three hundred and forty, uh, uh, it would be about a forty million dollar, uh, potential land investment. Now, our cost, obviously, we actually have money on, I do have this amount of money, but we're not like a lot of other people. We're, we're doing so much of what we do, we're going to keep it in this, pretty much. And, and historically, we, we tend to have, some people within your community are going to sell one house in your community and move into ours because they want to, uh, pre-own a new home. We're going to get some people from outside, you know, the city of Clayton, they're going to move up there. It's going to be a combination of both. There's a lot of empty nesters that are coming in and paying cash for our houses when they're downsizing. There's a lot of young families are coming in and buying new homes. So Detroit, vast, um, you know, spread of who's coming in there, we think it's, you know, adds to, adds to the livability of this, uh, community and this city. And we want to be part of it. We want to be a good corporate citizen. And we think we're demonstrating that. And again, looking where we're at in the, in the surrounding areas, again, if we're starting in Clayton down there at Hunter's Path, this, this is a continuation of that. And we think it's important. This will take a year or so to put everything else in line together. We probably, if this would be approved, we probably won't come back to you for, for probably six months or so. By the time we get all those things back, and then, uh, you know, moving on from there. So this isn't something we're going to be developing later this year, not, uh, just, it's going to be a process. We want to be part of it. We like Montgomery County. We like this part of Montgomery County. We're looking in other areas as well, but that's, that's what we're doing.
I guess another question here, and this might be more towards Jack. Um, the city numbers in terms of population in the last twenty years, you know, the population in the city, basically, in the, the two thousand census versus the twenty twenty census, how much growth have we seen in that twenty year span?
We're averaging about one or two people a year. Um, it's been stagnant for the last thirty years. It's been almost totally flat for, for the last thirty years in terms of population growth. So sometimes in the ten-year census track, it's gone down, sometimes it's gone up, but you're talking, I mean, minimal numbers.
Let me just, from the standpoint of the stability of our, of our community based on the number of, the population that we have and the, and the survivability of the neighborhoods. And I'm just looking from the standpoint of, you know, where are we at, where are we going, you know, projecting ourselves going forward five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. You know, what, what do we, we need essentially grow to develop, to have a financial base in order to survive. And, you know, how do we get there? And, you know, it's, we have several options in terms of how, how to support ourselves from the standpoint of the community. You know, we can raise everybody's taxes all the time in order to supply the services that everybody wants, or we try to find areas in which to grow the community so those costs can be disseminated amongst more persons. Plus businesses which come in once you have the population. Now, I'm not saying we, we have to do a development on everyone else's back. I'm just saying, these are the underground factors and features that we have to look at in terms of what do we do to survive. And, you know, it's, it's not an easy answer. There's no, you know, there's a lot of hard questions and no easy answers. And, you know, I just, I understand everybody's concern. I just, you know, where, where do you go? How do we get there? You know, how do we, how do we resolve the issues and questions and get to make something happen?
Something I found online was, um, Bargersville shoots down Arbor Homes' proposal. I, I don't know where Bargersville is, but it states, um, "The commission expressed concerns about density, uh, traffic, lack of active usable green space." Um, the commission went on to state, um, "How residents, uh, came to the meeting and stated their dissatisfaction with the development. The commission heard from several neighbors to the development and a farmer who uses the road to get to his field." They brought up concerns about the density of the development, drainage, traffic, and the potential loss of small-town charm. That's exactly what is on these guys' minds. So if another city, if another city can say, maybe this is going to hurt, hurt this part of their city, we could do the same thing. When you have this many residents show up to say, this isn't probably something we want in our area.
Well, with, with all due respect, I'd like to respond to that. First of all, I'm pretty sure he knows zero about that particular development. I'd be surprised if you do. Um, but I think, you know, I think, you know, you can take that in any context you want, folks. I'm not trying to sell you on, on anything here. I'm just, I'm just saying that reading something like that on, you know, on a news wire, it could have come from anywhere under any context. All of those things that, that-
Your citizen, what's sitting right here?
Shh, please, please. All, all of those things that, that Kenny just read off, we heard repeatedly, and I even said it tonight, traffic studies, water studies, density studies. Again, these guys are, these guys are running a business too, and I think he's made some concessions that, that we've asked for, you've asked for, and we've asked for. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be perfect. I get it. Two to, well, two to five acre, here, two to five acre lots, that, that, no one's building. Well, well, let me tell, here. Well, uh, yeah. Let's restore order here. We're not, that's, you don't need to apologize. I'm just saying, these guys have done their due diligence, and so has our council. And I don't know, I don't know how it's gonna, I don't know how it's gonna go. But we're gonna, just so, we're gonna, we're gonna vote it, we're gonna vote it-
It's Bargersville, Indiana. B-A-R-G-E-R-S-V-I-L-L-E. Bargersville, Indiana, population of nine thousand five hundred and sixty. Comparable in size to our city.
I also believe that one of the things that Kenny said just happened in Tip City, Ohio, which we all know where that is, don't we, sir?
Yes, we do.
That they're trying to ma- re, trying to maintain the small-town community. And that's why they disapproved a, a project such as this.
We just had a project approved in Tip City, Ohio.
I didn't say it was yours that got canceled, sir. There was one just last week in the newspaper. I don't remember the builder or anything else, but it was because the people in the city were concerned about the small-town feel of Tip City, and they didn't want to give it up.
Okay.
We are having that same problem here with three plats to the, the south, and now there's two to the, or, excuse me, two to the north, south, and two to the north now with the same problem. Bringing in people that, um, we don't know who the people are. There's nothing wrong with the people, but we're losing the small-town feel.
Well, we can go, again, we can go back and forth on this like we all have. And, um, is there any other, anything else new we can add to the discussion?
Uh, just see the gentleman holding up the merger report there. And the other thing is that the, in the merger report, it says that the city will not develop north of I-7, of I-40, excuse me. And I understand that that was twenty-five years ago, Mike, but when you make a promise like that, there's no date on it, I don't believe.
And then another thing that was on our desk this evening, I don't know who put this, but a signed copy, was it, did the city put this on our desk?
I did.
Who did? Oh, okay. So I would just ask, you know, when we planned Clayton, could you please raise your hand if you participated in any of the workshops for Plan Clayton? How many here?
Yeah.
So we had one, two, so just two people out of everyone here, two or three people participated in Plan Clayton. Um, we keep being told that Plan Clayton says this, and we have to follow the plan, but we're amending the plan and this, and it's not gospel, but it kinda is, et cetera. But we had three people here that participated. Um, we had the workshops, but if you would ask maybe certain members of council, they would say, you should have been notified, or it was on you to find out.
He's doing so.
I know. So my thing is, I don't, I don't think that this being put down in front of us again is wise, just because it, we had three people here participate in the Plan Clayton workshop, so.
Five years ago. Look, we're, we're getting in the weeds here, folks. We've had all the, we've had these, I'm sorry, we've had these discussions. No, you don't live in the weeds.
You work for us.
Is there any other questions from council? Questions or comments?
Yeah, what's in that selection?
We're only looking for rural preservation.
We, we all, we all understand that. We've had all these discussions.
And look-
Okay. It's, it's not an open meeting, folks. I mean, I'm trying to be polite here, you know?
I-
Is there, is there any-
To vote to let you guys speak, but it was shot down. Just saying.
Is there any other questions or comments from council?
I, I have a question. Um, all these developments you talk about having done, are any of them in the middle of a farm community? With, with the smells and the, everything that comes within a farm community?
Yes.
Because I, I know up in Troy, there's a whole row that, that has, each farm has a sign in front of it that this is a rural, um, I forget the exact wording of it, but that you're going to get the smells and the dust and the dirt and everything else when it's this time of year and we're plowing. And, and we don't plow anymore, but we're planting and doing everything else. But, uh, you, you run into that one no problem before.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Let's go with one more, Greg.
In, in looking at this preliminary drawing for the, this development, um, my one concern has been the, the availability of open green space. And you've listed a, a pocket park, and that green space is in the back, essentially, it's bordering Iron Gate. You know, my, my concern would be is if, uh, as a proposed development, the green space should be greater and with more easy access for persons to be able to use. So I mean, it's, while this is a preliminary setup in terms of the number of plots you might have, that in any future potential, uh, drafting of a plotted area, that more consideration be given to open green space and for accessibility for all persons.
So the accessibility, we show a sidewalk going back to that open space, the intent is that there'll be some, some functions in that pocket park to be determined that we'll show on the next level of plans. But the open playfield isn't intended to be just that, an open playfield. It's whatever the kids want to do out there, whatever the adults want to do out there, whether it's throwing frisbee or, or, or football or whatever. We're, you're not, we're not intending to put soccer goals or things like that. It's like an open park space. Uh, it'll be maintained, uh, by the HOA, grass cutted on a regular basis so they can go out there and use that open field. Uh, and then the areas, the pocket park is a more defined thing with, with structure, with benches and a playset and things like that.
Where does the mound go? That was supposed to separate Haber from that lot.
Landscaping in a mound, that's supposed to be there, now it's gone.
We weren't gonna have to look straight at their backyard either. That's not long.
Okay, here, I'll answer that.
Okay. The mound went, well, and honestly, I mean, I, it's, the public portion's closed. But I'll, just to address that particular question real quick, the mounting went away at the request of the residents at the first meeting. And that is, that, that came up. People said they were upset about the mounting because it was going to push the water back across from Haber. So the applicant removed the mound at the, at the, based on comments at that first meeting.
Okay, folks. Um, if there's no other questions, is there a motion to, um, to accept the ordinance as written?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the ordinance as written by Mr. Lieberman, second by Mr. Bachman. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. Okay, the proposal, the ordinance, uh, it passes as proposed. Um, you know, I, I understand, you know, no one's clapping. I get that. I, I do, please.
Do we get a chance to speak?
Yeah, we can start protesting right now.
Please.
There's gonna be a lot of houses up there.
Please.
Actually, it's our right, sir. It's our right, sir. We're here to protest now. It's our right.
Sir, just take it easy. Just take it easy.
Since we always make sure we note if it's unanimous, let's make sure that this is noted that it is not unanimous.
The gentleman, yeah, it wasn't unanimous. It was four to three. Four of them wanted it, three of us didn't.
Are there two things that we want?
There's two readings.
There will be a second reading, yes.
Only because the developer made several changes, and I feel like they should have been able to speak to that as well.
Okay. That's noted. All right, will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-052311, an ordinance maintaining the current division awards pursuant to the City of Clayton Charter, Section 3.03A, in order to provide for substantially equal population in each ward.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And show that that is unanimous, please. And we have, um, we have some new business. We have one new ordinance. Will you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-062312, an ordinance approving, amending Chapter 183, Income Tax Sections 183.012, 183.013, and 183.081 of the Administrative Code of the City of Clayton, Ohio, to provide for imposition of annual income tax rate of two and a half percent per year on income, and restoring a 100% credit for taxes paid by residents to other municipalities on such income on or after January 1st, 2024, when the city's income tax rate is increased to two and a half percent for the purposes specified herein, and declaring an emergency.
Any questions or comments on that? This is due to our, the workshop that we had?
Yeah, I have a comment, Mayor. Um, during the workshop, it was discussed that if we get enough development, we won't have to raise the income tax. And now we're doing both of them in the same meeting. I, I mean, I'm sorry, we, we gotta do one or the other. We can't, I don't see how we can fairly, adequately, equitably do it, do them both.
Any other questions or comments on that one, or is there a motion?
Move for the emergency?
Second.
Motion to move for an emergency by Mr. Bachman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let's show that that is unanimous. And, um, is there a motion on the ordinance itself?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Merkel, second by Ms. Kelly, to approve the ordinance as written. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. And we have, it looks like six resolutions tonight. Um, will you read the first resolution?
Resolution R-062339, a resolution authorizing and directing the Board of Ed- excuse me, the Board of Elections of Montgomery County, Ohio, to conduct an election of the electors in the City of Clayton, Ohio, at the general election to be held November 7th, 2023, on the question, shall ordinance number O-062312, adopted by the Council of the City of Clayton, Ohio, providing on January 1st, 2024, for an additional 1% levy on income to the total rate of two and a half percent, with funds generated by the two and a half percent income tax, to be appropriated solely for the purpose of general municipal operations and functions, and providing for the restoration of 100% income tax credit be passed.
Any questions or comments on that? And is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Take it.
Motion by Mr. Merkel to approve as written, second by Mr. Lieberman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, we have a roll call, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Me, Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. And let the record show that passed five to one. Will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-062340, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Kleiner's Group for professional citywide thoroughfare plan services at a cost of $49,600.
So this was one of those items that was on the, uh, the annual budget at the beginning of the year. This was also something that was in the five-year economic development plan, has been a work item for several years in terms of future planning for the City of Clayton. It was to, uh, put together a thoroughfare plan that is specific to the City of Clayton. Currently, we use Montgomery County's thoroughfare plan, which is almost a hundred years old in some spots. Um, we did go out for estimates for this particular project. We, uh, talked to three different companies. This is the only company that had the capacity to do it. It is the Kleiner's Group, who is the engineer, um, that City Clayton presently uses for our engineering review. Um, the forty-nine thousand and change came in underneath a budgeted amount the city council approved at the beginning of the year.
Will this thoroughfare plan benefit Arbor Homes' development?
I'm not really sure how you mean in that question.
Would Arbor Homes be able to review the thoroughfare plan with city staff to see a cost savings to them?
No.
Any questions or comments on this? Is there a motion?
Is this, in this conflict with Plan Clayton?
Well, conflict?
Conflict, conflict.
How so?
Well, Plan Clayton says one thing, and this one comes back another. Where do we go, Jack?
Well, one of the things Plan Clayton said was that we needed to do a thoroughfare plan. So we're doing exactly what Plan Clayton, that's just to do.
It also said that that should be country out there too, Jack. And a lot of the people that were at those meetings said that that's the nicest part of Clayton.
It also said, uh, national and Haber should be mixed use.
Okay, okay.
People are leaving because they don't know if they're gonna be allowed to speak at all. Because, uh, we tried to have a couple comments, you know, we already voted on this.
Will we visit or comment on it?
We can still speak at the end. Okay, because people are leaving because they think they can. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments for Mr. Coontz on this one? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Lieberman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let the record show that was unanimous. Will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-062341, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Montgomery County Community Development Block, excuse me, to the Montgomery County for Community Development Block Grant Funds.
So this particular item, um, this is for a CBPG project. Staff looks at, um, all available and, um, viable potential projects every year for the CBPG funding cycle. If you remember about two years ago, we submitted three potential grants to Montgomery County for consideration. One of those, uh, projects was a new sidewalk connecting Hunter's Glen, that is up on Union Road, uh, just north of Casey's, and connecting Hunter's Glen with a sidewalk all the way up to Salem Avenue. Um, that was a project that ranked third out of our three projects that, that, um, were submitted to Montgomery County that funding cycle. The first two projects have actually, um, ended up receiving funding. So this year, uh, Rainey Sanders and staff looked at, uh, potential projects, and we came up with the idea of submitting for this project again. Uh, the grant request would be for eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Uh, City of Clayton's local match would be twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Total project cost would be approximately a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Any questions or comments on that?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Bachman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let the record show that was unanimous. Thank you, sir. And will you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R-062342, a resolution pursuant to Clayton Charter, Section 12.12D, supporting the City of Clayton income tax levy to be placed on the November 7th, 2023 ballot.
And this is, uh, the same, um, ordinance that we were talking about. So is there any other questions or comments on this one? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion to approve as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let's show that that's unanimous. Uh, the fifth resolution, please?
Resolution R-062343, a resolution supporting passage of legislation of the 135th General Assembly of the State of Ohio, urging the United States Congress to repeal the windfall elimination provision and the government pension offset.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
To the city manager, if you wouldn't mind, could you please, um, notify at least Congressman Turner's office and both of our senators to let them know we pass out?
I will, I'll board it.
Thank you.
Okay, and will you read the sixth and final resolution, please?
Resolution R-062344, a resolution authorizing the five-year lease-to-purchase of two 2023 Chevy Silverado trucks for use by the Fire Department from Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc., at a total cost of $159,583.
Chief Garver?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you, there is a request to have the city manager approve a contract with Enterprise. Uh, that is off of the, basically the contract you guys approved earlier this year for our lease purchase option for all city vehicles. Uh, so we are the first one to actually go into that process. And, uh, so, uh, we did have one vehicle for the Fire Department this year to be, it was in a capital approval to be approved. Uh, and if we remember right, uh, we currently have Suburbans as our first response, or as our command vehicles. Uh, but due to cost, uh, those vehicles now, we upfit them with lights and radios and all the things that we require, we're now over six figures for a single vehicle, uh, which blows my mind. Uh, so as we discussed, we looked at different options. Uh, now we're going to pick up trucks, uh, which saves us about $23,000 per vehicle. Uh, so, and we're only- So, and we're only planning on getting one. The reason you have two in front of you, as you know, the police department has been unable to actually secure cruisers now, I think for the second year almost, Matt?
First year.
First year. So we actually do have a police vehicle, or a fire vehicle, that's only just now turned 31,000 miles on it. So we are going to actually give that to the police department, since they can't get vehicles. They will use that as either a lieutenant's or detective car, and then we're going to use that money to purchase a second vehicle. So just taking a look at all of our assets within the city, how can we maneuver that, where we can actually purchase vehicles for departments when we need them? So that's pretty much how we got here. But I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Chief?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show that was unanimous. The city manager's report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple items for you this evening. I'll keep it brief. Just a reminder that city offices are closed on Monday in observance of Juneteenth, and then also we will be closed on July 4th in observance of Independence Day. We have a few city events coming up. We have the shredding event coming up on Saturday, July 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. here at the city building. Items that may be shredded include paper records, tapes, credit cards, CDs, and microfilm. Shredding will be performed by document destruction on-site, and residents are limited to four boxes or bags per resident. We do have movie in the park coming up as well on August 18th at 8:30 p.m. at Meadowbrook at Clayton. It's free for all community members, and their movie hasn't been selected yet, but that'll be put out on social media when it is. We do have an opening, since we have a room full of people, on the Parks Commission, if anyone is interested. If you would like to apply, we're accepting applications through June 23rd, which is a Friday, and as always, council can bring any nominations that you would like. The Meadowbrook Pickleball Courts are striped, and they are open for public play. The paving for this year has begun. If you've been up Union Road, it looks very nice, and so does Salem Street and the top parking lot for Hardscrabble Park. Westbrook Park, if council recall, one of the projects in the 2023 budget was the resurfacing and striping of the tennis courts there. Innovative sports resurfacing will be completing that project, and the project includes the resurfacing of the tennis courts and replacement of poles, nets, and the striping for both pickleball and tennis. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Anything for the city manager?
I have a question about the pickleball. Is it all under reservations?
It's not. It's first come, first served.
Anything else for Amanda? Okay, thank you. Okay, folks, we're going to enter into the visitors' comments, and I'm going to just take it as you signed in here. Just to kind of go over the rules again, these are established rules, it's not something I'm making up here, but anybody who wants to speak is going to have a chance to come up. You have three minutes to speak. It's not a give and take. So basically, what we're looking for is your comments, good, bad, or ugly, and like I said, we'll take note of everything, and, but, you know, it's, we're not getting into a big discussion on everything, okay? So that's kind of what we're looking at. Three minutes, please be respectful of everyone's, you know, time here, not only us, but, you know, everyone else, too, so. Okay, the first folks up, and if you want to come up, you come up. If you don't want to, that's fine, you don't have to. Say, no. No, they don't need sworn in for this. Okay, the, yes, it's all, we're actually videotaping everything, so yeah, everything you say is on the record.
Mayor, just to clarify, I think it's five minutes, not three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to cut it down. Okay, you've got five minutes, folks, okay? You've got fi- five minutes. Well, I can tell you, I, I'm not going to go around and count, but I can tell you that I got about two or three emails. That's it, so. Okay, the first folk, or the first person up, I believe it says Gloria. What I'm going to ask everyone to do when you come up to the podium, if you could state your name and address, and again, that's for the record, and then you have your say.
Okay, is it on? My name is Gloria. I live on 10831 Putnam. We've been here since August of 2014. My husband and I were military. We retired, we came back to the community from Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. I sought out a specific piece of property where we could have land for our family, where it was in a good community. Our son was still in high school and stuff, and I don't want my neighborhood to be developed. And I'm concerned, because if we do one development, then right next to where we live on Putnam, there's another area, and what's to say you guys are going to come back, and you're going to make that into another development, and then another development, and then another developments? It's got to stop somewhere. There are people in the city, we can't have the city, it's like this all over the nation. People are moving from someplace else that's not working for them. We need to make those people accountable for their areas and improve their areas. Don't keep coming and taking from us. I think that's it, so.
Thank you. And Chris?
My name is Chris von Fahnostock. You heard from my wife. I live in 10831 Putnam Road. I have three comments. One, currently, I just went online here yesterday, there were 86 homes for sale in Clayton area, averaging 120,000, which is, I think, if I'm not wrong, a little less than 300,000, but I could be a moron. And now there are 87 available as about two minutes ago, just saying, so 87, 125, that's pretty close, just saying. Second, I wish I'd been informed this land was available, because I'm dying to get 5, 10 acres for my children to do their own thing. I'd much rather turn it into farming and keep it that way, for all natural reasons. We can go into great detail, glad to bore you to death, but there's a lot of reasons why we collectively, as Americans, need to continue to keep our farmland. Every day, 137,000 acres disappear in this country for different reasons, and most of it's developed. We have already tons and tons of industrial buildings over by the airport that aren't even occupied. What the heck is going on here? And for $320,000, last time I checked, houses like in Tip City, it went up, what, I'm sorry, West Milton, went up, what, a day each? What kind of construction is that? And now we're going to have young people coming in, we hope, to bring money and their children, everything else, for 250, 340, $60,000, that the first tornado is just going to hiccup and blow away. I really question this sort of approach. Finally, I just want to say that it, I've been here a while, and this is the first time I've found out when your meetings are. So I don't know if I must be an idiot and don't get the information or pursuing it, but it'd be awful nice if we got something in the mail saying, meeting in the state, it could be just a little postcard, and if it requires more taxes, fine, because I think if we don't, as American citizens, get engaged collectively, we're going to lose this country. And it starts right here. That's just what I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Anna?
Hello, my name is Anna von Fahnostock. You've heard from both my parents, oh, I'm sorry, 10831 Putnam. You've heard from both my parents. So as you have heard, we are interested in keeping the land American, and America was based on farming. So having a subdivision come in across the way, not only is it going to affect the ecosystem of the area, the water, the critters, for those of us who live in the livestock community, we understand the sheer impact of taking away another farm. Very passionate about it. But another thing to consider, me as a millennial, I can't afford a $300,000 home. Most of my generation are moving into their parents' homes, living in multi-generational family environments, and it's successful. So why are we encouraging people my age to try and go into debt for hundreds of thousands of dollars, when there's so much land available that could build a multi-generational family and really keep it together as a small-town feel? So Clayton is Clayton. It's not Inglewood, it's not Union. Having Union Water moved into Clayton, that's really going to disrupt the ecosystem. If you don't know anything about groundwater and everything, with agricultural, how things work with that, rainwater needs to go somewhere. It was really, really hot for a long time these past couple weeks, and when it rained, the roads washed out. We don't live in a place where it's common to have the roads washed out, so when they do, it's really bad. Losing your car into a ditch that drops three feet is very dangerous. So adding a new development where people are coming in, having zero, zero experience living in the farm, in the, out in the country where, oh, power goes out, what do you do? I don't know what to do. It's very common. You have to be able to be prepared for that, and living in a house where you can watch your neighbor's TV is not very effective for such a community. And also, the weather, we had a tornado a couple days ago. How do we even guarantee that the subdivision isn't going to turn into shrapnel and take out the next subdivision and the next neighbor's house? We live where nobody, we only know our neighbors because we sometimes see a car come and go, and we like it that way. We don't want to be all up in each other's business. I don't care what TV show you're watching, if it's keeping me up at night because you live so close to me, I'm not interested. So as the next coming up in generation of the community, I speak for myself, and I know I speak for others in the room, I don't want this. I don't, I don't want my neighbors to know what I'm up to. I want to live in the country where we moved out to on purpose. I want to live away from the city. Dayton is a city, Clayton is not a, it's not a thoroughfare city. Back when they put in 35 going through Trotwood, I used to go to Precious Blood. We used to go to the Salem Mall, for those of you who don't know, it was pretty banger around Christmas time. So having the idea of a thoroughfare really coming through, and maybe I misunderstand exactly what the thoroughfare is entailing, but having a thoroughfare come through Clayton is only going to bring tons of crime. I don't know if you've gone down, passed Home Depot, headed up down Salem recently, but it's not a place I hope to get a flat tire. So please keep that in mind, everyone, as we move forward with the, I would say, sus times of things, where we don't get notification about any of these new projects building. I thought the apartments that were going on, I think it's, I think it's, uh, Hoak Road, yeah, thank you, on Hoak Road, I thought those were going to be multi-level apartments for young people like myself, not, and I mean, no offense to anyone in the room, a geriatric-type ranch home. That's not enticing for someone my age to come and look at someplace where I share a wall with somebody else. The, these developments are not, they don't really reflect what the community wants, and I don't think anyone's actually asked. I don't, you said, Mayor, you said, oh, I don't, I don't want to go around, or I haven't gone around door-to-door. Why not? Because that would show you actually care about the community. It would show, and if anyone knocked on my door and told me the other day about this, guess what? I'm here because I care. I care about my community. It would be nice to hear from my councilpeople about what's, what's going on. It's kind of shady and sus when all of this stuff just shows up, and for those of you who don't know what sus means, it means suspicious. Suspicious behavior, sus. So it's really suspicious when all of these new projects just pop up overnight, and you never got the chance to hear about it, you never got the chance to vote on it. I know, I didn't, there wasn't in the last election. I know, because I was there working it. So I care about the community. You can't say that this next generation isn't invested, but I want the community to be invested in staying a small community. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Karsten? Is that right? Karsten? Joe? Joe Plummer? Is that right?
Rose Plummer, 11415 Old Mill Road. So basically, the concern I want to talk to you about tonight is that groundwater and runoff is going to impact more than just the Iron Gate community and those on Haber Road. I live on Old Mill Road, which is eight tenths of a mile approximately from the corner of Haber and Phillipsburg Union. We already experienced significant flooding issues from the runoff that comes from the Iron Gate development there. There's a spillway behind, it runs along Phillipsburg Union Road, and then it crosses under the road. It kind of runs catty corner to some of the properties on Reinhardt, and then impacts a number of the properties on Old Mill Road before it dumps into Pig Eye Creek. So I did finally listen today to the workshop session that was held back on the 18th, and sadly, by the way, I wasn't aware of anything that went on in that May 18th meeting till I saw the Register Herald, which I think is the Brookville paper that covers, you know, news here in the area. That hit the, that was published on June 10th, significantly after the 18th meeting. So I'm not quite sure what you all consider communicating to the residents, you know, how, how that's done, if there's some, you know, is it the website, or how else are we supposed to get information about what's going on? But yeah, so the big thing is the runoff, and I'm concerned that what I saw, I couldn't really read and interpret all of that plan. I don't know, it looked like there were only three retention, detention ponds, whatever, but I just ask that you give serious consideration to other residents of the City of Clayton, because half of Old Mill Road is Clayton. There's a few houses on the other side that are Union, and then, not that you guys can do anything about it, but we have significant drainage issues from Union Springs. Another, probably quarter-mile down the road, east on Phillipsburg Union, there's people at the end of Old Mill Road that, when there's significant rain, there's significant flooding in their front yards that wasn't there until the additional houses had been built there in Union Springs. So that's my concern for the evening. I think I might have some neighbors here as well, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Pam Hobe, is that right? Did I say that right? 4217 Phillipsburg Union? Okay, sorry, but I didn't mean to butcher your name there, sorry. Greg Childers, is Greg still here? Pam Gruze? Leanne Bustos? Maurice Bustos? Jeff Eubanks? Nope. Mr. Turb, Turbe? 4516 Phillipsburg Union? Nope. I'll, I'll watch for it. Let's see. Gosh, I'm sorry about this. I mean, my, I can't read my own writing sometimes either, so. 5475 Phillipsburg Union? Nope, okay. Kelly Clark? No? Oh, Kelly? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kelly Clark, 4138 Phillipsburg Union Road. I say something every meeting, so I'm just going to say this real quick. I appreciate the excellent paving job on Phillipsburg Union Road out in front of my house. That's fabulous, okay? I appreciate it very much. I just want you all to think about the fact that, at my advanced age, I don't have a computer, so when everybody says, oh, go to the website and do this, do that, that's, that's not me. So when it comes to that time for information, sometimes I just don't get information because I don't, and I don't want, and at this point in my life, I don't want to live in a phone. I just hate to see, it's just my culture, you know? So when you say, go to the website and look at this and that, or whatever, I know that we got the information for the CCA in a water bill from Clayton, and I'm thinking, that was an important thing that should have had its own explanation. And so stuff like that, for me, says to me, you know, we're not having the best way of information. I also looked in the, in the, in the Clayton newsletter, I don't see anything about meetings. Did I miss that? They used to be in there, pretty much when they have them, okay? I could be wrong on that, okay? So one last thing, and I'm not going to be saying anything more in any more meetings, because I think, I know we talked this thing, at my advanced age, I go a lot more on feeling. There's just a feeling about why somebody is really pushing this, and I think most of these people will think this, it just really seems like this is really, no matter how this thing gets worked out, somebody from somewhere feels, it feels like that somebody is really pushing this down, okay? And no matter if we have all kinds of opposition, not with the, not with... And no matter if we have all kinds of opposition, not with the, not with the dense, I mean, not with the actual development, but fighting everything, everything. That's the way it feels to me at this point in my life, that somebody, somewhere, really wants this to go through, okay? And it makes me wonder why, who is it, and why, and what's the gain? So thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, I'm Ryan Farmer, 11735 Old Mill Road. I've lived in Clayton for, golly, has it been 25 years now? Spent 18 years over on Putnam Road. Had opportunity to move to a beautiful setting on Old Mill. If you haven't been down it, it'll be like you're in a different world by the time you get to my driveway. My concern is mostly with the drainage issue. My neighbor hit on that. I've experienced my property some significant damage. I don't know who to go to, to raise hell about it. So I brought some pictures from when I first moved in, if you could pass that around so the council could see it. We've, my, Pig Eye Creek runs right in front of my house. My only access to my home is a bridge, and I'm not a whitewater rafter, but if you look at those pictures, I sure could have been one that day and several other days. If the water got any higher, I think my bridge would have been declared illegal because it was too close to the water.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Go ahead.
We have a video of it when it was flooding, if you want to.
Yeah. My wife Paulette, she's talking.
But that describes it better.
Yeah, this is, this is the worst case, severe overflow.
Play on the video, please.
Yeah, there's a, play on there. So, so my concern is when, I'm going to say, I, I've worked for the Air Force over 30 years, and I'm an analyst, and my job is to help folks with stars on their shoulders reduce their risk. And I help them make better decisions. And I have to say, what I've observed tonight, you know, with the developer, your decision-making process is sus. And, and why do I say that? Because you approve something without having all the risks laid out for you. You basically had to approve it to get to what the risks are, and so, but you've got that approval. So imagine if the Air Force did that with acquiring aircraft, you've had a lot, you would have a lot of junk aircraft on the runway, because, oh, well, you said I could build it. Oh, it doesn't work, which is going to sit there. So that, that's a concern I have as an analyst in terms of making decisions, and I'm in the DOD. I'm not in public service, and I guess that's just the way you guys do it. Doesn't make sense. We don't commit money in, in the military unless we can make the viable point that it's going to be a benefit. So my concern is, when that water assessment is done, you need to look, not just next door, you need to look in the entire Clayton boundary. You need to go down Old Mill Road, because I, I can't afford more of the same. I, I had a, a general engineer come out, I've already done, the last picture you see was some repair I had to have done underneath my bridge, that, that cost us over $8,000.
Is that your driveway?
Yes. That cost us.
That is the only entrance to our property. If we lose that bridge, we have no way to get onto our property. We are landlocked. How are we supposed to get into our home? There's no other way to get on our property, none. We're, we are not even off our own neighbor's property, they have a creek that divides the property. We have no way.
So, that, that's, that's my concern. I don't know this $100,000 water study, how far they're going to reach. I dare say they're going to, they're not going to look past Iron Gate. I would press them to, you know, you need to go all the way to the Clayton boundaries. Where is this water going? I say follow that water all the way to the river, you know, see where that goes. That, that, that's my concern. You know, obviously, I'm not for this, I'm, I'm not real thrilled you guys voted on it before we could make our case, but.
Can I just inject one thing I think you left out? We actually got estimates.
Ma'am, you can come up to the podium. We can pick you up.
Yeah, well, she's right after me, so, I don't know, can we tag team within 10 minutes? Is that all right?
Okay, I'm sorry. We actually had estimates done, and the first estimate, using an engineer and a contractor, they were saying, we think maybe 25 to 30. If you lose this bridge, we're thinking maybe 50. We were able to get that repair done for 8,000. It's washed out more of our rock wall, which we rely on to not wash out that. That estimate we just got is 22,000. Who's going to pay us to fix this? Because this isn't our fault. Who do we go to? If I go to the City of Union, they're going to say, prove it. What am I supposed to do? And that's a genuine question.
You can finish up, and I'll take my time, my real time.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I had. I just, you know, I'm not, not for this, obviously. I, I've yet to hear, you know, in terms of a risk assessment, I hear, I haven't heard anybody come up here and say they were for it and talk about all the great things about it. So I think really whoever voted for it, you need to have a loaded gun of silver bullets to show that, yeah, this is why it's good. And I, I watched the last council meeting, there's a comment that said that sometimes change is hard. Well, guess what? Change is hard when it's wrong. And I think if, going this direction, it's just not a good fit where, if, if you lived out there, you'd know packing that area with houses is just a bad fit. I don't care if Iron Gate's there or not. It is just a bad fit for everybody around. And, you know, that's just our anecdotal, my opinion, but I think in the midst of folks that were speaking with some emotion and passion, there's some real facts in there which I think were dismissed. So, as an analyst, that, that's my take. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Paulette Farmer, 11735 Old Mill Road. I will say, that, all the, everybody said they didn't know. It actually has been published, but you have to look pretty hard for it. And the city plan, I actually watched what was happening, but my parents were sick. I couldn't come. I had to make a choice, and I, I looked at that, and I, it's like, I know this isn't good, I need to be there, but I couldn't. And that's life. We rely on you guys to do a good job when we can't be here. And I will say, we were all asleep, and that's the reality of it. It is our fault for being asleep. We should have paid better attention. But I grew up in this area. My parents moved to the house on Putnam Road, I'm sorry, we lived on Putnam Road. They moved to the house on Reinhardt Road when I was one year old. It's a house on Reinhardt with the llamas out front. And my mom is the one that sold shackley. My dad tells a story about how they found that place. They looked all over the area. They were looking for the perfect place, and they pulled up that house, you know, it was, it was junk. It was absolutely junk. And it was an old log home. And his dad, my dad's dad, took one look at it and said bulldoze it. My dad said, they looked at that property, and he's sitting there thinking, what, you know, this is awful. My mom turns to him and says, this is exactly what I've been looking for. So he said, well, okay. And they, they spent the next however many years putting everything in that property. They restored that log home. That log home, I don't know if anybody knows the history. It was built between 1810 to 1815. I don't know if everybody knows the history here, and how rich the history is. We had Quakers that came here in the 1800s and settled that area. I don't know if anybody knows Marcus Moat. He was a famous Quaker painter. Westmilton will actually claim he was born there. He was born in my parents' home. You guys have a gem, and you need to value it and preserve it. We have to sell my mom's house. That's where we were right before this, that's why this is so emotional. I love that home. We have to part with it. When this was going through, I called our Realtor yesterday. She's immediately on the phone with the appraiser. How is this going to affect the value? Well, we're lucky, we already have our appraisal, and it's, it's valid. But that's the first concern, and the appraiser's first concern was the traffic, the traffic affecting the value of the homes. It hasn't even happened yet, it wasn't even voted on yet, and they're concerned about the value, and the property value. And he said, he cannot make a good judgment on that without a full assessment on how it's going to affect the property values. And that's the reality. I heard what the developer said, looking back six or seven years on six houses on Haber is not a good estimate on how it's going to affect the value on the property. The appraiser, when he appraised my parents' house, we had them out there. He said, I'll get back to you in a week. A week goes by, he contacted, said, you know, I think it's going to be two weeks. This is more than I thought, this is more complex than I thought. This is somebody with over 50 years of experience. He recommended us to him because of his level of experience and the complexity of their property. Three weeks later, we finally met with him, he was finally able to finish, and he said, I couldn't value this, because I looked in the entire Dayton area, and there is nothing like this. Nothing. We need to preserve what we have. We have something nobody else has. And he came back and he said, a lot of the value that is here, I can give you the dollar value, but he said, there's a lot of intrinsic value. We have something nobody else has. And why turn it into what everybody else has? I guess I would speak to everybody else here. You can still do things about this. There's a lot of processes that have to go through. We need to be organized, and we need to stay in communication with each other. And we need to connect, and we need to share our phone numbers when this is over. You know, we do have elections coming up. This isn't, this is not 100% done. This is the first step of approval. If you want to enact change, get involved. So I would ask everybody, let's get our numbers together, and we need to stay in communication.
The mayor has a list with everybody's name and phone number and address on it. You can ask for copies of it. That is public record, and he has to provide them to you, and you've got an Instagram list.
Okay. But I will say, I lost my dad in 2018. I lost my daughter in 2021. I lost my mother last year. I'm losing my family home, and now I'm losing my own. This hurts. It hurts more than you know.
Thank you. Jeremy Blanford? Alan Hogan?
I'm Doug Bias, with 10857 Haber Road. And you've seen, you've seen a lot more faces tonight than you've seen at the last two meetings. And the reason for that is because many of these people who showed up tonight didn't know about it. Those of us who happen to live right across the street from the field there on Haber were fortunate enough to get notices. Many of these other people did not. Do you know what it took to get these people's attention about this? Ms. York and her two children, two days ago, in the cold rain, spent hours going door to door, passing out flyers. My wife and two children, two little girls who are here tonight, spent three hours yesterday going door to door notifying residents in the area, a job you all should have done.
Right.
You had children doing a job each one of you should have done, whether it be mailers to everyone in the area. But I'm sure Mr. Coates is okay with that, children doing your job. It would have simply taken a little letter to everyone in the area to notify them.
It would have all been, no. No, you're supposed to give them gifts, or they would have.
And let me, let me say this.
Bias has a floor.
Let me say this as well, for those of you who have not been here the previous two meetings, I want to point out something. Mr. Bachman here has not asked one single question over all three meetings. He has just sat there blankly. Did you hear I'm asking questions tonight? No. I'm, I'm wondering if you can even speak and say anything other than yes or no. I mean, maybe we should just give you a button to mash, yes, no buttons to mash. I never heard you ask one single question at all over all three meetings. I mean, he just, he was just up, he just got re-elected last year. He'll come up again if he decides to run again. But I want you all to remember this. I want you all to remember this. And Mr. Bachman, I, I've been told you're Republican, and I have a lot of, a lot of friends in local Republican parties. And if they were to ask me my opinion of you, I would say, you not only don't ask good questions, you don't ask any questions at all. And another thing that I don't know a lot of people realize, but Mr. Mayor, you and your wife are both Realtors. Are you going to guarantee, did you all know it? They didn't know this. You haven't, you.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not a secret, but you haven't disclosed that. Do you guarantee tonight, do you vow and promise tonight that you and your wife are not going to have any business dealings with these new properties? That you will not be listing them as Realtors?
You know, that's never come up, that question's never come up.
That's a conflict of interest.
Well, what, that's, that's why we have a city attorney, and if that comes up, I guarantee you, I'll be talking to her about this. This is not, this is not about me. It's just not about me.
Could it possibly bias your opinion?
It, it has not.
Has now.
And, and is your wife, is your wife held to that as well?
She holds to it also.
Okay.
Just, just like in your profession, we're held to ethical standards, and we, we will.
I question ethical standards of government these days.
Well, I question ethical standards to some of the medical issues too, so.
I'll, I'll remember that. I'll remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Scott, I'm Doug Bias, in case I decide to run.
Good evening, my name is Megan Bias. I live at 10857 Haber Road. And yeah, my family and I, we moved here 2019 to get away from city traffic, close neighborhoods with our two beautiful daughters, yeah, that were out doing your job yesterday for over four hours. So we see so many faces from yesterday that we talked to, and the majority of people did not know what was going on. Shame on you. These new faces that you've seen, I brought my girls here so they could get an experience of the great America, the right, the freedom of speech, and you didn't give it to these people. Shame on you. I can't, I've heard that they've said that the people, they're doing these developments because, oh, this is for young families, this attracts young families, they don't want yards. That's not true. I'm in that demographic, I have friends in that demographic. I know a couple that has three children, nine years and under, that live in a developed neighborhood in Vendelia. They're looking to get out. There's a registered offender of minors that just moved in around the corner. They want land, they're willing to sacrifice and drive an hour each way to work because they want what we have here in Clayton. They don't want a development. You, you stopped too soon, you gave in too soon, you could have held out, you, you could have changed and made something different, had a new vision, had city council, neighbors, and builders come on board to start something new and start something different, see vision, two acre lots so people can have nice yards, so they can keep an eye on their children, have them, a place for them to play, have a yard for their dog to run around and know what's going on, not have predators looking right in on them because the houses are 10 feet, 20 feet apart. People would flock to it, you could have had a gold mine, but you jumped in bed with the first offer that you had available to you. Thank you all for showing up, thank you for all the bright, smiling faces. Clayton is awesome. We had nothing but kind faces. Nobody, nobody shunned us or was worried about us knocking on their door. A lot of these people, we hadn't had the pleasure to meet. Thank you for coming up and making a difference, because you can make a difference. Speak up, be the change, and fight. Thank you.
Kristy Cox, 209 Kimmel Road. And I'll just say the same thing I said the last meeting. I'm disappointed, very disappointed in some of the people here. A lot of people were talking about upcoming elections and such. One thing you have to really, and, well, first of all, about getting involved. I haven't seen this many people involved since the whole merger, okay? And I was heavily involved with that, and some of these people up here were involved with it as well. And I'm, as I'll say, I'm disappointed. One thing you need to realize, and, you know, when you go vote for these Clayton council members, who they are and who they represent, and Dennis Lieberman sits up here today as your ward rep, he's the rule area of Clayton and the village of Clayton. Next time he's up for election, if he runs, you need to consider this. He's the one that should have been out knocking on your doors, telling you what was going on, okay? Brendan Bachman, he's your at-large rep, okay? Everybody votes for him. So he can go around to all the, the dense populated area, and he can get all the, the votes from the soccer. votes from the soccer moms he needs to get elected. But you need to organize and vote next time that they're up for an election, okay? Take that into consideration. That's all I have to say.
One more thing.
I forgot one more. Greg Merkel, he is also one at large, okay? Get organized, go to these people, talk to them, make them talk to you, all right?
Thank you. Sam Cox.
My name's Larry Erbal, 10511 Haber Road. I'll be speaking for Dana tonight. Plain Clayton, plan Clayton, useless. Greg, if you gotta ask, if something's necessary, then it's not. All this though, this project's going to be is a drain on services. Our young ladies went to over 200 residents in this area, not one was in favor of it. I should bring around a representation government ideas. And this business, these guys, as you refer to them, got a sweetheart deal on a chunk of land and they're in it for the profit. I don't want to hear another thing about his community involvement or how he cares about who's living there. They don't. They got money on their mind. And you might as well fire any zoning enforcement guys. You ought to be out of work because the developers are going to determine what's built, where they build it, and when. Just do away with your zoning department. Chief Garber would probably like to have a fire hydrant at the corner of Haber and 40 that's been missing for how long? Tells me how, how we're prioritized amongst the city. That thing's been missing for a month. And ladies and gentlemen, it's easy to see who on this council represents is a representative form of government and who knows better than all the residents is a form of tyranny. And unlike my other speeches, I'll take no questions.
Thank you, sir. Carol Hench. No? No. Rich Hench? Dana?
My name is Dana York. I live at 10635 Haber Road. I would like to ask some questions here that I hope get answered by council to the developer. So I know water is the main concern. I do know that your engineer, your past engineer was recently fired, you hired a new one. I do know of several new developments within the city of Clayton that have had to stop being constructed because they were not doing things properly. I also know, and correct me if I am wrong, that the engineer for Clayton only has to look at this, that Montgomery County Soil and Water, I don't believe, has to look at these plans. So all those engineers that work for the county, I don't believe they have to look at this. And correct me if I'm wrong, just our one engineer. So just want to inform everyone of that. But I would also like to have the city of Clayton officials here stress that it needs to go through the Montgomery County Soil and Water Division and have it looked at by them. Okay? Not just our one engineer. Also, I'd like to tell a little story. Back about 10 years ago, I lived on Diamond Mill Road in the old village of Clayton. My parents lived across from me on Kimmel Road. And they wanted to run water out to the jet. Now that water was going to go right in front of my house and in front of my parents' house. And that would have benefited the city of Clayton. They would have got some economic development out there at the jet and would have benefited the city of Clayton. Little Janus Ward Center out there in Clayton, the old village of Clayton, we filled that thing with all of our neighbors because we didn't need water. We all had wells. We also went to the old village of Clayton to all the residents that don't have water or sewer there now and asked them to come because they're the ones that actually needed it. And they were going to put the water, go right by them, not even touch them. Because they needed to get to go out to the jet and, and, and help the city, right? Make money, not help the people. The jet is a joint economic development district that's along 49 that is part of Clay Township in Clayton. And if something's built there, it benefits both of us. Well, at that meeting, Mike, I think you were a council member at that time. We all came and said, we don't want this. And I think your exact words were, I'm going to listen to the people and I'm going to vote against this. And you voted against it. That would have helped the city, but you voted against it. I'm asking why? Why didn't you do that this time? You had all of these people here. You didn't let us talk? And you're going to sit here and look me in the eye and say, why? Like, why did you do this? You said no then because you were running for mayor. And now you sit there and you won't let us speak before it happens. Mayor Stevens is up for election December 2025. Bachman's up for election December 2025. Merkel, which, who I actually respect, he's up for election 2525. I'm just stating the facts, Greg, just like, you know. December 2025, so they're up for election afterwards. Lieberman, their term ends 2023. My name's Dana York. I'm going to be running for Clayton Council.
I didn't answer your question, though.
Thank you, sir.
Alicia York, 10635 Haber Road. First, I'm going to tell everybody, I do not public speak, so bear with me. It's a petrified of it. Every single person here, thank you. I'm mad at myself for not walking door to door the first meeting. If I would have done that, the, I'm going to correct Larry left. It was not 200 people I talked to. I had 400 flyers that I printed out. I might have 50 left. Many of the people I talked to were out, going out of town, so they couldn't be here. Not one of the, I at least talked to 150 by myself, face to face, with my children in the rain. I waited till this week. I didn't want people to forget about it. I didn't do it last week because I knew that was too long between last week and this Thursday. I chose the week before and my son has baseball, so I had to pick the day that was raining. It was great. My kids walked with me for three hours door to door. We were drenched. They walked to the doors, they talked to the people. I have never been so proud of my city. The people I've met are amazing. I urge every one of you guys to actually go door to door and introduce yourself. The people we have are amazing and the people that you're running out because you're trying to build it up are amazing. I've lived at my house since I was eight, so that's a good almost 30 years. Going to be 38 this year, I'm getting old. I love this area. I played basketball with your daughter. I love you guys, but I don't think you're listening to us. You guys are supposed to be the voice for us when we can't voice. And I agree with my husband. You didn't give us the chance to talk and I've lost a lot of respect because of that. We deserved a chance. He, I, sorry about the developer, I do not like him. Every time we went to speak, he left. He didn't listen to anything we had to say or concerns. He never sat here and listened. And I feel like that is a slap to the face. If he wants to help us and he wants to build something that we want, I think he needs to sit and actually listen to what we have to say, not just what you guys do. And I feel like you guys should agree on that as well. I'm going to look at a few things on my phone, so give me two seconds. Koots, I'm not trying to point fingers at you. I know your job is to bring in developments, right? That's your job. I don't understand how you can't see this community and see that sardine cans is not what this community wants. We, we agree, we need to grow. I'm not arguing with you on that. Why did we have to go from the RCD2, which, yes, I agree, it is extremely hard to find someone to buy a 10 acre lot with a house. It's expensive. I get it, it's hard. And it's not as much money as you guys want to bring in. I get it, it's all about money. Why did we have to jump from that RCD2 10 acre lot to PDD where you can build anything? There's no limitation. Why could we not? You know how angry the citizens are. You guys know, you can see. Look how many people showed up with a two-day notice. Two days, this is how many people came. Imagine if I would have done it a month in advance and talked to them and got their phone numbers and kept them in. I'm pretty sure the whole city of Clayton would have been here. I don't think one person would have opposed. Every single person I talked to was against it. I would say 80% of them never knew because a lot of them are older and were part of the merger. They don't know how to do social media. They don't know how to do Facebook. It's foreign to them. We can't, we can't be mad at them for it. But they were a part of it and you promised them specifically something. I stayed here, I'm raising my kids in my family home, I just bought it from my parents because people move from, for example, I met someone on National, amazing family. She moved from Union, she was already part of Northmont, she wasn't coming here to be part of Northmont, she was already a part of Northmont. She moved a couple streets over to have land. Why don't we draw the people that want the land and build for that? That's the people we want here anyways. That's the, that's who we want. So why did we not go and look for a builder that could have done two to five acre lots? That's where I'm confused. I understand you're bringing in developers, but why don't you bring in what the people want? I understand you want to bring money. That makes sense too. We need to make money so that we can thrive, right? But why can't we mean in the middle and just do the two to five acre lots? It's beautiful. I don't mind looking at a two acre lot across the street. It's what Clayton is made and to look like. And I forget your name, what is your name? She's, she spoke wonders. We have a gem and we're getting rid of it. People are moving here in Clayton, not for the sardine cans. They're moving to Clayton to have two to five acre lots. You need to look for developers for that. Make us happy. We are the people that pay your taxes. We are the people that make up your city. Not them, not the developer that walks out and doesn't listen to us. He didn't listen to one word at any three of these meetings of how we felt and what we wanted. We did not say we wanted the mound gone. We said, how big is that going to be? It could be an anthill and we would not notice it. We did not say the anthill, we, we did not want the mound gone. And that frustrates me because you put words into every one of our mouth that was here. I would prefer the mound like Spring Lakes, then I can't see the, excuse my language, I'm not going to say it, sorry. I would prefer the mound over a backyard of trash. I'm disappointed in what you're bringing into our city. You're not doing a good job. And everybody on the council, except for the ones that were on our side, I'm very frustrated because we trust you to hear our voice. I've grown up with you, I know you Bachman. This doesn't make sense to me. I feel like you're a country person just like me, so it kind of breaks my heart that you're not who I remember from high school. And it really frustrates me. I liked you in high school. I still like you, but I don't know what's going on right now and it's frustrating. I don't get it. It doesn't make sense. You guys are thinking with money and pockets. You're not thinking about the actual people that pay your taxes and live here. I can't stress it enough how wrong of a decision you guys are making and now it's stuck at PDD. Why could we not have fixed that middleman, done the two to five acres? It still would have brought in money. It would have made us happy. It would have made Clayton beautiful. Now we have sardine cans. My husband works for a company that is very similar to Auburn, I'm not going to name names. When they build a house, they bring in the frame. They don't build it onsite. I get, it's not, money-wise, it's not smart. There were multiple places that the foundation was cracked and they don't say anything unless the person buying the house notices it. And if the frame isn't straight, guess what they were told to do? Stick some wedges of wood underneath to make it even, cover it with drywall, no one will notice. Is that the type of homes that we want in the city of Clayton? I don't think we do. I don't want it. So that's why I urge you to find something like Spring Lakes, a developer that will build a nice house, two to five acres. I know it's your job, but I want you to do your job better for this city. That, what you're doing is not good for our city right now, at all. And I feel as though I speak for the entire group that is here. I don't want anything across the street, but if it's going to be something, make it worth looking at. And school issues, I know that was brought up. I work at the school. EE just closed. Every single person in every school that I've talked to, we are going to be over. We are all at the max. We all don't have anywhere for the new kids. Now we have kids at the Westbrook and Union. Now we have the kids coming at this development, if it comes, and the people on Hope and possibly the one on Phil, or on Haber and National. We don't have the school, we don't have the school system for that. And I'm saying that from a personal experience. I've talked to many people, I'm in the school district, ours is at a max. EE just closed. They're spreading kids out. All the other schools are at a max. And you're losing teachers, you're losing good teachers. It's getting too stressful. You have to think about things like this before you change the zoning because now we can't go back. I apologize, I'm almost done. The biggest thing is, I put too much trust into you guys by not going out and talking to people on the first meeting. I should have done that first because I know this room would have been so packed, you would have had to go outside to have the meeting or something because this was a two-day notice from these people. Some three for the day that it rained. That says a lot about our community. And I wish you guys would just see that because you're looking at just the money, but you also have to look at us. So I, I really want you guys to really look back and think if this was the right decision because it really wasn't. It's bigger than this. It's not about the development on Haber and Phil's for Union, it's about Clayton in general. You guys have to do better because you're not doing what people want. No one is, except for the three that see it.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's certainly hard to follow someone who can't, yes, someone who can't speak very, very well. My name is Scott Anderson. 10581 Haber Road. So thank you for that. You, you spoke a lot of what I was going to, going to bring up. So I want to focus specifically on the fact that this is the fifth meeting that many in this room have attended. One was the committee and then for the last four associated with the council itself. At every one of those meetings that I'm aware of, I attended three of them, including this one, there was one person in the room that I'm aware of that was in favor of what you just voted on, and that was the one who's going to profit the most from this. Everyone else was not. And I would ask even right now, is there anyone who's in favor in this room right now in favor of rezoning? Yeah, up here. The point is, there was no one. And we were, we represented that every single meeting. And yet we had a four to three vote. I thank the gentleman and the lady who voted for this, but for the four people who didn't vote for this, I would like to know your reasoning. What was your reason? How do you justify that yes answer? I mean, we had folks that tried to allow us to be able to speak. Now I am asking the question to myself, what's the point? Because the vote is already over. It's too late. But I thank the gentleman and the lady who voted no against that. But for the folks that voted yes, I would like to hear from you, though I don't think I'm going to get that today, I'd like to hear what your reasoning was. You even mentioned in a meeting that was held before one of the meetings that we were in. You even mentioned in a meeting that was held before one of the meetings that we were in, it was a budget meeting. And in that budget, budget meeting, someone on this council, and I don't remember who it was, stated that the taxes that were gonna be received potentially from a development like that was only gonna marginally help. So even that didn't make any sense to me. So I would really like to know what your reasoning was for why you voted yes. That's all that I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is it Trudy? Trudy Anderson? Kyle Anderson? Kevin Mullenix? Kathy Gay? Amy Roberts? John Roberts? No. Keith Gay? Larry Erbal? Mark Alsobrook? Uh, Nicole?
Nicole Alsobrook, 220 Iron Gate Drive, Union, Ohio. Our house is, the backyard is this development. We have water that stands in that field all the time. Thankfully, it hasn't affected our house, but I think that the water is a big thing. Right now, in Iron Gate Estates that we know of, just on our street, because it's a dead end, there were three vacant, brand-new homes. That they have had to rent out, two of them. That's a concern. There are brand-new homes there with a lot bigger lots that people are not buying. Either the price point, or they're not moving to the, the community, whatever it is. So that is a big concern, that these houses, that you're gonna ruin all of our land and then nobody's gonna live in them. And then we're gonna have vacant houses. Our development, and I know what the gentleman was saying, that he, they build it and manage it. But our development, there were vacant lots for many years, at least 10 years. Because all of the developments stopped. So that hurt our values of our home. So if you don't, I mean, there's, there's just so many things that I think maybe you've thought about, but these are the things that I'm thinking of, being the neighbors in, in Union, where it's going to back up, where I can see their houses right now, and I'm gonna look at a backyard. And a pond that will probably bring in more flooding than what we have now. I have a really good friend that works for a very reputable excavator that probably is one of the excavators that was talked to on this development. And he shared with me that the excavating is wonderful when they leave it. But the developers, almost every single time, once the developers get in there, it ruins it. The water, that, there's just so many problems after the developer. So, Mike, I appreciate your questions when he was speaking a little bit, but, you know, how, what, how are they gonna fulfill that promise? You know, there's, i- if the excavator leaves it in good condition and then they go in and they do their building and it ruins it, where are we at then? I thought that la- at last meeting, which I think this was addressed from an employee, but I thought that the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend, but I watched it online, that I don't remember if it was, um, I don't remember if it was the developer or who it was, but said that they had spoken with the Northmont School District and that they were fine with it. But tonight we found out that that hadn't happened, so there's just a little bit of a, um, conflict there of what was said the last time, so. And then another thing to consider is, you know, we were super excited moving into the Northmont area. We've lived here for 27 years. We were super excited when the Esther Price Development went in. What happened to that? We are looking at something else like that. All those houses were super close, they were way out of the price range for new families. That's something to consider as well. I mean, you look at it now and it, and quite frankly, it looks horrible. So, all of those things, I think, should really be considered as well. I know that, you know, it's a little too late, maybe it's not, based on some of the other stuff, but, um, you know, living in Union, obviously, I wouldn't be voting for any of you, but I really think that they all spoke very ni- I mean, they, they speak volumes as far as what you guys should be doing for them. I know some of you guys, and you guys should've talked with them. I don't think you listened at all, it was a waste of everybody's time to come out here. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve Hensley?
Nope.
Joe Frazier?
Uh, Joe Frazier, uh, 10669 Haber Road. Is there any way we can put the picture back up there real fast, for just a second? Any possibility? I'll make it quick, guys, I know everybody's getting tired and we all have barn animals and- Animals to get home to, kids to put in bed for school and stuff, but, uh, it doesn't take like a rocket scientist to look at this and figure this out really quickly. So, alright, let's see here. Think this is me, right? Yeah, okay, so this is me. Okay, hold on. That's me. Okay, anyway. My mom and I and my girlfriend Jessica, uh, we moved out here in 2020. I worked very, very hard to do this for us. If anybody knows I haven't, this is the first meeting I've been able to attend, because this time of year, I work about 60 hours a week. I'm a finance manager, actually. So I know to follow the money. So, that's what's happening here, guys, let's just be honest about it. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, today I stand here before you not only a concerned citizen, but someone whose personal dream and hard work is directly impacted by this issue of rezoning. Okay? The beloved town of Clayton. I've only been here for three years, but I call it home already. The people that have lived next to me, uh, my neighbors, my direct neighbors, uh, salt of the earth. Uh, that's who we are out here. They plow driveways, uh, they put up your fence posts, they cut your grass. They do it all. They'll do it for you, if you can't. Everybody here is from the same fabric. I've heard multiple people say, "People don't want this life." That's bullshit. You know it and I know it, because we're all here for the same thing, fighting for it. This is what we want. Look at these houses, okay? These are our yards, you can't even see the rest of our properties, okay? You can pack six and seven of these houses into our front yards. Like, think about that for a second. Like, it doesn't take you to get out a measuring tape to see this. It, literally, you can visualize, just move them over. You can put six of these things in our, in our front yards. Like, that doesn't make any sense to me, and it shouldn't make any sense to you. Uh, it's just not a place I call home now. It's a place where I've invested my time, energy, and resources to create a life that reflects our aspirations and values. Uh, for me finding my dream home, 10669 Haber Road, was a labor of love. And that unobstructed view that I have right now is a significant factor in why I made that decision. It symbolizes the natural beauty and tranquility that attracted me to this area in Clayton in the first place. And the prospect of rezoning that would jeopardize this view fills me with concern and disappointment. But it's not just about my personal view, it's about the impact and the character and the identity of our community. Remember that, guys. Our town's charm lies in its picturesque landscapes. Our rural area, where we farm, where we have our kids, where we have our goats, our sheeps, our horses. Remember this, okay? It's our identity. Our town charm lies in that. Those unspooled views are not just a luxury, okay? It's an essential part of the original plan of Clayton. You guys know this, I've heard this from multiple people in here. Rezoning decisions that prioritize short-term gains over long-term preservation of our scenic vistas views here compromise the very essence of Clayton that we hold dear. Additionally, rezoning decisions can have a ripple effect on property values and the overall desirability of our community. I came here for this reason. If anybody knows this area right here, there's a tunnel of trees. The first time I drove down this road and crested through that and saw this piece of property, I fell in love. I was gonna fistfight somebody over it. We closed in six hours. I had to go way over what they were asking to make it happen, guys. This not only affects our financial and personal well-being, but it also impacts the economic vitality of our town. I strongly believe that while responsible and sustainable development is essential, it is, absolutely essential, it should not come at the cost of sacrificing the dreams of ours, our dreams collectively here, not only mine, but ours, and the aspirations of the individuals who have contributed to our community, that's you guys. Remember that. We must find a balance that respects the character and beauty of Clayton while allowing for thoughtful growth and progress. This means involving the residents in the decision-making process. Here we go, guys, this is an important part. Everybody open up their listeners. Ensuring transparency and exploring alternatives that preserve our cherished views and maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods. Remain, remember the integrity of our neighborhood. In conclusion, I urge our community leaders and decision-makers to consider these personal stories, dreams, and aspirations of every one of these residents who invested their hearts and souls into Clayton, Ohio. Let us find a way to protect our views that we hold dear while promoting responsible and sustainable development. By striking this balance, we can prefer, preserve the essence of our town and create a future where everyone's dreams are respected and cherished. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Steve Stapleton?
Steve Stapleton, 5286 Phillipsburg Union Road. I moved into my home 30 years ago, in 1993, when it was Randolph Township, for, to live in the country, like many of these people here, that's why we live where we live. Not for these developments to come in and all that the developments will bring with them. I think the council members that voted against this development, and I would encourage the ones that voted for it to think again. Maybe it's not too late for this thing to be stopped. It's not gonna be good for that community, I don't think it's good for Clayton. I have a lot of concerns with it, one is the water, not only for the water runoff, but for all of us that are on wells out there. How will that impact us? Does anybody know? Is anybody gonna study it? Are people gonna look at that? It's a legitimate question. The traffic, Mike, I've talked to you before about the traffic going up and down that road. They got cement trucks and dump trucks running down that road 60 miles an hour all day long, every day, it's ridiculous. Because of the gravel pits. Have I seen a police presence out there, even though I've asked numerous times? No. Not at all. The traffic's a problem. You don't have to put it back up, but where that incoming road is or outgoing, that's right next to woods right there. That's gonna be a disaster if people try and get in and out of there. People getting rear-ended to stop, people pulling out and getting T-boned. That is not a good setup and it, it's not gonna work. We've had people killed at Haber Road and Phillipsburg Union since I've lived there. Even before there's a traffic sign there and after they put the traffic sign in. Because of the traffic, it's a problem. And this is just gonna make that problem a lot worse. And I'm, I'm really disappointed that we didn't know about this sooner. I'm, I, like most of these people here, I didn't know nothing about this. And I found out two days ago. And that's just not right. If, if any of you council members, and I doubt any of you do, that live within that area, a few miles of there, I bet if you did, you'd be voting no. I bet it would never got this far. It's like our voices are not heard. And like I said, I've lived there a long time, and I was there 25 years ago when the promise was made not to develop north of 40. And here we are. It's happening. And City Council has allowed it, or is allowing it, but it's not too late to stop. I just, I think it's gonna affect our home values. I think the studies that Arbor's gonna do are gonna be their studies and their engineers and their people. Are they gonna be legitimate? Are they really going to represent the people that live out there and the city of Clayton? You know the people they hire to do their studies are gonna do them the way they want them done, so this keeps progressing forward. Nobody stops it. There's services. How long will it take a fire truck to get from here out to there? When you put another 125 homes? I said there's not a police presence out there now during the winter, you can't hardly get those roads salted and cleared. It's like we're the last ones when they ever show up, if they show up. You got a problem with services out there and we're gonna add to it? I said the police presence, it's unbelievable. I sit on my porch, I watch these trucks go down through there, 65 miles an hour. Nobody says a word, nobody does anything about it. And we're gonna complicate that even more with the traffic? I don't know, there's, there's more to it, but like I said in the beginning, we moved there to live in the country like everyone else here. And that's being taken away slowly but surely. I was there before they built the Iron Gate or the community that's there now. And now we're gonna put another one in. And where's it, like someone else said earlier, where's that stop? I don't know. I hope that something can be done, that this does not go through, or that at least one of the four council members that voted for this will change their mind and go against it with the other three. Because you can clearly see the people that they're representing, and there's a lot more. There's several hundred more that would be here if they could. Not a person out there, and I know a lot of them, are in favor of this, and to be honest with you, they're pretty pissed off about it. And I, I think they'll show it in every way they can, including when they go to vote for people that they feel are gonna represent them or not represent them. So again, I, uh, hope if there's any way to be able to stop this and lessen the impact, or do what some of the other people have, have mentioned, you know, as far as changing lot size or whatever. I don't have any idea where that can be done at this point, but I would ask council to con- consider the voice of the people that showed up here and the voices that are not here, because they feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is it Diana? Floyd Fisher? Mr. Fisher? You've been waiting patiently.
I'm not a real good speaker, and even less with my hearing. I can hear, but I can't understand a whole lot of what's going on here. But I do know this. I bought my farm, 20 acres, on Putnam Road 52 years ago. Railroad Route 1, Randolph Township. So I've seen a lot of change. Some of it's beneficial and some not. Clayton has really done an excellent job on draining ditch lines. Hurt me, cuts my farm up two or three different areas till it's almost impossible to farm anymore. But, and they've also made the road, it's a small, narrow road. I asked probably over five years ago for a line down the middle, because people can't tell where the road is. Now we have a deep ditch, more traffic than we ever had. If you go off the road now, you're going in the ditch with snow. But I love it here. Raised three good kids. Learned a lot of farming, did a little bit of all of it. In fact, the first time I plowed, I didn't even know how to hook the two-bottom plow up. And, uh, I found a bar out there and I thought, "Well, got something holding two sides, I'll just put that bar on there." And I went to the farthest field and I'm plowing with a two-ditch plow, feeling good. One evening, my neighbor come over, said, "I've been trying to figure out what you're doing wrong." I said, "What do you mean what I'm doing wrong?" He said, "You're plowing this wrong, you can't plow that way." He said, "You gotta turn the wheels out on the-" on the, you know, now you gotta turn them in, turn them out to cultivate. And I said, well, that corn's not gonna know it. So I planted the corn. And then when I got done, and I had a crop, of course, I didn't have no way to pick it, everybody else is busy. And my dad come out, and he said, what we gonna do about this corn? And I said, I don't know. And he said, take that wagon, we'll go down there. You take two rows on one side, and I'll take two on the other, and we'll pick it. And I said, no, I ain't picking corn. But I did get it picked, and it didn't, didn't hurt anything. Learned a lot about animals because I did raise some of them. But it's been a good life. Like I said, I raised three good kids, and I've really enjoyed living in the country. I've seen a lot of property just on Putnam Road that was farmland, that no longer is farmland. In fact, from County Line Road to Sweet Potato Ridge, there weren't half a dozen houses on the road. And I think I'm the only living soul now that was there when I moved there. And I, for one, absolutely hate to see this development come. All that's gonna do is raise taxes, taxes. They're not attractive homes. They're sitting one on top of the other. At least they look that way. It's just not a good thing. So that's all I got to say. But I'm glad that all these other folks are here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rob Spilker? No. Looks like Joanne Hodgkins?
Joan Hodgkinson, 4489 Sweet Potato Ridge Road. I'd like to just give a little different perspective on this. I've lived at my property for twenty-three years, and all my family lives in California. I call it the hellhole. And they all went out of California. My brother at eighty-one is moving back to Ohio. I'm thrilled to death. He's not a country kid, so he's gonna live in Inglewood and be very happy there. His son, Kevin, came back every year. He'd work all year and save up his money so he could come back and visit. He loved the place. He loved the area. Excuse me. He'd get out and walk those country roads. We'd go down Martin Bayle to the fishing park. He said, this is what life is about. It's not California. It's not living next door where you can reach out and scratch your neighbors' back. In one of our discussions, I said to him, Kevin, I have no children. He said, Kevin, when I'm gone, this is yours. He cried, and he's not the crying type. He said, this is where I wanna live my life. A year ago, Kevin died. He has a son, Zach. Like his father, he came back to visit Aunt Joanie. He walked the roads. He spread his father's ashes in those country roads. I went to his graduation two days ago in California, and afterwards he said, I know you left the place to my father. Is there any way? I wanna live in that area. They're choosing that area. They've seen the big cities. They chose it because of what Clayton is and what we hope it stays. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Earl Harlemur? Bill and/or Jane Krauscher? Lori Hartman?
This is gonna be hard and emotional. My name is Lori Hartman. I live at 7293 Phillipsburg Union Road. In the nineteen thirties, when Orville and Dorothy bought that land, they raised children there. My father-in-law and his brother were raised there. The land where my husband and I live, just on the other end of Phillipsburg Union, right before you get to Phillipsburg, is where his, Orville's parents lived. That's where we live. We live on Anonah Ohio Century Farm. My husband and I seriously talked so long and so hard about how could we afford to buy this out of the trust. Because after Orville and Dorothy passed, just trying to care for that property was such a burden. Because as wonderful of neighbors as you all are, do you understand that throwing the rocks from your gardens or your property into the farm field damages equipment and causes thousands and thousands of dollars of damage? That kids cut down the fence in the wooded area in the back, ripped down the no trespassing signs, brought, some of you were probably missing beautiful lawn furniture that was in, in the woods when the Iron Gate development first opened. It sat on my back porch for years. Because when we went down there, we tore all of it apart. We knocked, we took equipment back there and knocked down all the BMX tracks, racetracks and everything else that they dug holes and built ramps and everything else. It's been so hard just to find insurance agents to insure that property because there's no longer a house there. There was no one living there. My mother and father-in-law have that, pay for that out of their own pocket. And every couple of years, the agencies that they go to will say, sorry, we can't insure it. There's nobody there. And if somebody goes on there and gets hurt, you could lose everything. I understand that you moved out, and, but when Orville and Dorothy bought that land, there were eight houses out there. Eight. Most of your houses were not there. I remember in the eighties, in mid, late eighties, having a picnic over at their house, and Orville said, funny thing, we were having lunch with one of the other neighbors, one of the other farmers, and they had somebody come and show this proposal. And he showed it to me, and all four farms here had developments on it. There were roads going right through our property, going over to Haber Road. That's never gonna happen. The land was in a trust to protect it. But now there's no way to protect it anymore. A lot of you are saying that it's your fault, or it's your fault for voting for this and encouraging this development. They were not involved. This property's been for sale for five years, and no one's made an offer. Five years. It's been almost a year ago when this company came to the Realtor because they were over on Sweet Potato and the development they're doing there on Sweet Potato. And they happened to see the signs. And they called the Realtor. And the Realtor called my mother and father-in-law and said, we have an offer. My mother and father-in-law are in their eighties. My husband and I own, I mean, we, we operate the farm that we live on. We're in our fifties. Our children live close, but yes, I, we would love to pass that on, but there's no one else that wants that property. If somebody has an answer, my father-in-law came to the first meeting, and he was going to speak, but he felt so much hatred, the way everyone was speaking, he sat quiet. And I seriously considered just sitting there and being quiet tonight. I, I do, I totally understand all of your points, but you're, you're pointing the fingers at peoples that are, have voted different ways or that have no, they didn't have anything to do with that company coming to the Realtor and saying, hey, well, this is the offer we're gonna make. Nobody else in the last five years has made an offer. The, the soil and water. Yes, there's soil and water issues because in the forties, there was agricultural drainage that was in there, and it went all through those four proper, farm properties. When they started making those developments, back in the forties, you know, we didn't have as many laws as we have now. There was no zoning. You didn't have to mark where your irrigation was. So when they started cutting those lines from Haber Road over, building those other developments, that's when the water backup happened and why it's going into other areas. Contact Montgomery County Soil and Water. Stefan Brydenball is one of their people. Contact him. All of this has to be approved. Any of the water issues has to be approved by Montgomery County Soil and Water. It has to be. Yes, it does. I sit on the zoning commission for Clay Township. I know that this process started in the zoning. If you are concerned about what's going on in your community, volunteer to be on one of these committees. There's multiple committees. Be part of the community. Don't just complain when it's growing. And I'm, again, I understand your side. I do. Again, we live right outside of Phillipsburg. I know what it's like. We, like I said, it's hard when you have to deal with people throwing their trash over the fence. I don't know how many times I've had to call people out to replace tires on tractor because I'm trying to get hay in, and I have a flat tire because somebody threw nails out over the fence. Just think about the people who are there. It, it's, there, I can tell you that not one of you have contacted our family and asked what our side was. Nobody called the Realtor to ask him about buying the property over the last five years. So...
Okay, guys. Miss, Miss Hartman has the floor, please.
And yes, it's money. But it's money that, at that time when it went up, the real estate market was booming. And that's what the Realtor decided at. So that, that's what it is. All the meetings have been recorded. I, I did listen to the past meetings. I did, I did think that it was, that the community did not want the berm. So when it was not there, that's what I assumed was, that's what I took from the previous meetings. I, I think that council has been very tolerant of behaviors considering Robert's Rules of Order. A lot of, all of these policies are state law, and they have to follow certain rules. There's still another reading of this. Somebody could change their mind, and we could go back and we'd have to give all of the earnest money that the company has given us so far back because they'd, so if y'all have another option, we'd love it. But, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Valley?
I am Steve Valley at 1111 Putnam Road, Inglewood, Ohio, which is on the north side, exactly one half mile. I've been out there for thirty-five years. I just found out about this myself. I don't think that's characteristic just to Clayton because I also own two properties on Main Street in Inglewood, where the new gas station where Action Tire used to be, and I never got any notice. I was able to go and attend the meeting there and view my opinion before a vote hit. I'm a little disappointed in that. I owned my own business for forty years. I'm very familiar with Clayton. I remember when Clayton basically had three locations. They had Waltz, they had a little beauty shop, and they had a SoHo gas station. And as a little boy, my father did go there, and I went with him, and looked up the pickles on the thing and stuff, and an attendant at a gas station got shot to death. That was the size of Clayton. Now, saying that I'm in, or on Putnam, is Putnam even Inglewood? What's the zip code for Putnam? What's the zip code for this new project? It has a 45322? Am I missing something? I thought Clayton was 45315. Pardon me? Okay, okay. Thank you, everybody. I, I'm, I'm not a speaker. I, I, but I was here. And I golfed tonight, and I wanted to come here and see. It affects my property. When they're talking about sidewalks and stuff, I don't even think there's a sidewalk out there already. I agree with Mr. Gorman totally. It stinks sometimes out there. The water is a big problem. A big problem. I live out by Satterwaite's Farm, and I can tell you the irrigation that that property has had to have just to keep it open. I don't understand why that we couldn't have a discussion, why, if people were notified. I mean, I had to pass through where it says police only to even get a place to walk. Okay? Maybe the next meeting should be the larger place, in a little better open forum ahead. I, I mean, I, I know you folks have jobs to do, but I, you really had to dig down deep in your gut and say, what am I really doing? Don't be selfish. Be like, if it was yours, how would you feel? You don't want me to take my acreage, which most people here had a requirement for acreage to live out there. And now you're cramming that six or that eight in there. It doesn't make sense. You walk down Putnam, everybody has a courtesy. They know you can't, you can't even drive two large-sized cars down there without slowing down and being courteous. You think you're gonna have that with that development? We've already been represented about how it's not working, the water at the development right across from there. Iron Gate, okay? It's a big mistake. And I think you got time to look in your stomach and see what you're tearing up. Everybody out here has paid big taxes. The representation i, 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 is for, but we... I can remember as a student, not even a driver at the time, to where they would put a car on Haber Road because of school accidents that happened. As a representation for our kids, our children, our... As a representation for our kids, our children, our schools. You know, we get the propaganda about it's gonna bring it up and stuff. We're closing schools. My dad went to Randolph Township. I got a brick or two from that place, okay? My family lived right across from where Shaw's Inn used to be. We're making a mistake. I hope there's another meeting. I hope it's communicated a little bit better. I appreciate your patience. I know there's a lot of irate people, okay? I just learned about it. That's wrong. That's wrong. It's wrong not to have an open thing discussion wise before you put a vote on. That's all I have to say. Appreciate it. It was a great meeting.
Thank you, sir. Dennis and Jamie Marlowe?
Dennis Marlowe, 3835 Phillipsburg Union Road. One of the issues that I would address is the water issue. That land on the other side from my property on the south side of Phillipsburg Union Road is basically a wetland and a marshland. There's a lot of water under that soil there. It feeds the wells on the south side. Okay? They're gonna do a water study. You know, the water study should have been done when we had all this torrential rain and watched the water come over Phillipsburg Union Road. Your police department has been out there in the past, blocking off that road because it floods. A neighbor two doors to my west, he always gets his backyard flooded. Now, Iron Gate's the problem. You can't build something in there until Applegate fixes his issues. I went to a couple of those meetings, and of course, since I was city of Clayton before that was built, I basically was shoot off. You know, this isn't any of your concern, this is a city of Union, but we'll take your comments. That's the kind of shit I got over there. So, they knew about it, wetlands and so forth. And your developer here isn't addressing that. Oh, he's gonna do a study. He's gonna come out and do a study in the middle of August, when everything's dry. And he's gonna say, everything's fine. You can't do that. That's a wetland. Okay? When it rains, it floods. Front yards across the road get water in them. There've been a number of times my front yard had water in it come over Phillipsburg Union Road, where they had to close it. It's even worse just west of me. And my neighbor here can attest to that. You know, our backyards fill up with water. And I'm sorry for the people that live down Old Mill. I know what it's like, because the water sits in my backfield and goes down the creek that runs in, down to them. That's a lot of water. And you put more streets in there, you're gonna have more drainage issues. And until you get that problem fixed, you can't put new houses in there. The drainage issue is there. And like I said, Applegate's got a problem, and you need to get him to fix his issue first before you can put your issue in. You get that taken care of, and you probably will be able to go forward with something in there. The other thing, you had the map up here. You'll notice that all the properties from all these owners that live here, you notice the size of the lots. When this was Randolph Township, in order to build a house, you had to have a certain frontage. Okay? That was a requirement. Apparently, that went out the window with the damn merger, and you guys aren't paying any attention to that merger agreement that happened years ago. And we were asked to vote on. Of course, we were strong armed and said, well, if you don't vote for it, you're either gonna end up in Union or Inglewood, somebody else's city. And I sure as hell didn't want to end up in Applegate's. That's why I moved out in Randolph Township. I didn't want to live in Union. I didn't want to live in Inglewood. Okay? I wanted to live out in Randolph Township, which is now Clayton. My greatest fear is that John's gonna develop the farmland right across from my house, and Bill's house. He's probably, he's just biting at the bit, until the owner of that property decides they want to put in these little postage stamp lots with multifamily homes or whatever, or apartment buildings. You know? That's what he's gonna do to it. Okay? We have to show that we want building done correctly, based on what the area already looks like. What's there? And there is absolutely no reason, you know, I'm not against, you know, putting some houses in there, but make it appear like the rest of the Clayton housing is around that area already, with footage out the front. There's plenty of room on that, I believe it's 40 acres out there, to do that. You don't need 125 homes in there. Okay? But like I said, I wouldn't put one home in there until I had the water drainage issue taken care of. You know? And it affects my well water. You know, are you people gonna give me free water? No, you're not gonna do that. You're gonna say, well, tap in. You know who I have to tap in with? Applegate. Bullshit. I ain't tapping in with Applegate for nothing. Okay? So just take a look at that. The other thing is, what was mentioned, truck traffic. We have a gravel pit east of us. Concrete trucks. Trucks filled with limestone. Traveling east and west on that road. You add 125 homes in there with families. And I'm just waiting on the day, since Iron Gate's been in there, I've been watching kids ride bicycles up and down that road. One of them's gonna get squashed like a squirrel in the road by one of those dump trucks or cement trucks. Put that picture in your mind. Because you guys are to blame for that, if that happens. That road that was just repaved, are they gonna tear that up to put sewage and water lines and that in, now that they just put it in? That seems to be the consensus. You know, you just resurface the road there. You know, whose money did that come out of whose pocket? Some of it Clayton, some of it the federal government funds and so forth. If it came out of Clayton's pocket, it comes out of these people's pocket to do that. I don't want to see some little kid squashed by a dump truck. I've got a picture at my former office of a kid from one of my associates that was killed and squashed. It's not one you want to look at. Your fire chief here could probably contest some of the things he's seen with kids in accidents and so forth. Well, put a bunch of family homes out there on a busy road like that. Of course, the answer's gonna be from the police chief. Well, we just reduce the speed limit to 35. Doesn't matter. A dump truck with eight to 10 tons of limestone in it, you can't stop on a dime. You know, it takes probably 60 feet to stop that truck, even at 35 miles an hour. So, you know, what you're doing, I understand. What, the Hartmans that own the property, I understand that. You know, it's in trust, they need to get rid of it, they need to find a way to sell it. But I think there's a way to compromise and get some sort of, you know, we need to take a view at what's already out there, and how it was set up, and how it was built around, and maybe develop it that way. Don't let Arbor. Arbor's, screw them. You know, they're in it to put as many homes in there as they can get. The more they can get in there, the more money they make and everything else. Okay? You're saying tax money. Why would a 400 or $300,000 home earn you any less tax money than $300,000 homes? Or whatever the price range is that they're gonna put on right there. But anyway, keep the commonality of the existing neighborhood around there the same in your development. Are you trying to compete with the Applegate and the Iron Gate issues? And say, we can do as much as they can do? No. Let's feed off of them if you want to develop it. Say, let's do something bigger and better, and do it right. But like I said, I stress on you members, that water issue is a major issue. And your people that you're gonna have in houses in there are going to render from those issues. Don't put a basement in any of those homes, because you're gonna have water in it. People that are living in Iron Gate have to get sump pumps to pump water out. It's on a wetland, a marshland. Make sure that comes out in your report. I thank you very much for my time.
Thank you, sir. Trey Wing?
My name is Trey Wing. I live on 4541 Phillipsburg Union Road. I'm not much of a speaker, I'm kind of an introvert, but I decided to come here anyway. So, I've lived in Vandelia for four and a half years, and the whole time there, there's been warehouses, 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 development this, development that, traffic nightmare. And I moved out here, not even four months ago, to get away from all that. To get away from the traffic, get away from living on top of people, because I was living in an apartment before. I spent hours and hours breaking my back, working hard, saving all this money, get this house, find out there's gonna be this big development that's just gonna make, same with Vandelia, traffic nightmare, just a whole mess. If there was to be houses built there, like everybody else has said, make it match everything that's been there. Make it match, have acres of land. Because I'm 24 years old, and I don't want a $300,000 house that I can't be told, I gotta be told, oh, your bush is gonna be trimmed like this, or whatever, by an HOA. Why would anybody do that? Why? Yeah, but it's just, it makes no sense to me. Pretty much everyone else has said, like you've said, everything, basically took the words from my mouth, like everyone here is right on everything. I just, I'm just disappointed on how it's going, but I'm definitely glad that we're seeing all these people here and all that, so that's a good thing. But that's about all I got. I'm really tired, and I gotta get to work at 6:00 in the morning. Yep.
Thank you, sir. Jamie Wallace?
Jamie Wallace, 11221 Putnam Road. I also did not know about any of this until I got the yellow paper that my husband told me about. We have three children. We moved here, this is our fourth summer. We have a little under 10 acres. My son, I'm very proud, that is the last eighth grader at Northmont Middle School to get a phone. So we are very, like, old school, we don't play video games. And we moved out here for the environment, not to be in houses on top of one another. I think it was the gentleman standing next to me that mentioned, when you go on Haber and the trees that hang over, like, you pull into this environment that's just totally different than the rest of the town. And that's why we chose to go out there. And I 100% understand that there needs to be something built on there. But to match the five acre lots that are across from it, that are just perfect for families. My main concern that I'm coming up here for is the schools. My kids go to Union. We picked Union for a reason. We didn't want them to go to the school in town. Nothing against the schools in town, it's just, we wanted the environment of Union. And with EE closing, I think our enrollment is the highest in Northmont, of over 300 students. And I'm not okay with that right now. And I can only imagine what it's gonna be like when more houses, if they built a development. I know that they're probably going to some of those board meetings for schools that they would have to bring in. I know that they have to, like, pack the schools to get funding, so that they can add additional things, but, like, that's no way to learn. I'm a teacher myself. My building has 600 students exactly on the dot, and it is insane. The relationships aren't developed as they would be if you had smaller class sizes. And I'm just, I'm really scared as to what that would mean for my kids at Union, not to mention the middle school. Those classrooms are just sardines already. And so, I'm here as a concerned parent for the growing size for schools. So, just kinda sharing my two thoughts. Again, you know, we picked out there for a reason. And it's not gonna impact us, we don't live across from it, but, you know, we do drive past that, and the schools is my main concern. And I wasn't sure if that was like, they did talk to the schools, I don't, I don't, they didn't? And I know that they would probably really want more students, since our enrollment's down, and we're dropping to like a D2 school, but, you know, like, it is what it is. So, but, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Pedrosky? Uh, let's see, Mark Kazdahl? 1187 Old Mill? Galahli?
Galahli, 10600 Putnam Road. I'm new to community. I came here over a year ago. I moved for privacy. Okay. Love it. Moved from the city to the country. Country life, the best. Okay. My house, kinda like, kinda like this here. I have no neighbors up front, no neighbors on my backyard. Cornfields. I love it. It's quiet. Birds, deers, bunnies. That's why I'm here. If that happens in front of my house, I'll be pissed. So I feel Joe. That's what I came away from. I don't want these be next to me. Because this is gonna be a hassle. No more privacy, no more quietness, no more silence. That's what I want. That's what I'm paying for. This is all new to me. I'm kinda was a city girl all these years. But now I'm a country. There's a lot of my neighbors here I never met yet. So I'm glad I came. Now I know you. What I learned today? The water issue. Apparently, it's a big, big, big issue here on Putnam Road especially, and kinda like all area around. Once I remember my neighbor came. And we spent like two hours to look for the tile on my front yard, because after the rain, my yard, my front yard, is a pool. I can swim in it, my dog loves it. He told me he wrote many times to the council, to the city. I don't know how it all goes, but he never got an answer. Water is still there, nobody cares. Water is still there, nobody cares. Now I wonder. These issues, like, continues, and nobody can take care of still, after how many years? I don't know, it's been going on. Long time, and it's still, still. If the city council cannot take care of one road, how you gonna take care of all these sardines here, when they're gonna develop? Mike? Brandon?
Is that a question?
Yes.
Jack, where they gonna develop? Develop what? Say it was for.
Well, they have to go through the process first.
I know, but how, what are we thinking, about two years?
I don't think infrastructure would start being put in for about two years, for.
Is that a question, man?
Hmm, not quite, um, the water, everyone here pretty much speaks about the water So, it's been going on for, what, years now, decades?
Yes. Union doesn't do anything about it, do it with.
Right. But we're gonna build more? Develop more problem, but we still not take care of the current one? I don't know. Now, um, who's asking, what's the game about this? You left a guy. Ever heard about Fifteen Minutes City? Fifteen Minutes City?
Yeah.
That's what reminds me about. Kinda suburban version? Is it about that? Is it?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Is it about to put people on top of each other?
I'm not supposed to come in here.
Under surveillance? And keep them under control? How the guy say, uh, said, um, that young guy, actually admire him a lot, twenty-four years old, he cares. Kinda hopeful young generation? But they seem to be, you know, on the phone all the time? So, it means HOA is gonna be here, like?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they're doing. So, they, they gonna tell you what to do, not to do. No more privacy, no more independence, no more rights. That's my opinion, and that's what I think there is going.
Thank you. Matt and/or Paula Priest. No? Don Rarick? Pat Porter? No Pat Porter? Jess Fasic? Okay, that's all the names I have on the list. Is there anyone who, who didn't speak? If, if you'd like, I mean, if you already spoke, I would prefer...
I didn't speak, I didn't deliver the science, chief.
Yeah, that's all right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thirty-eight, sixty-one Phillipsburg Road. Really, did pretty much everything everybody in here said. Water's an issue. Iron Gate now uses, I call it an extension of Pig Eye Creek. If you're driving down Phillipsburg Road and you look to the south, you see a, basically a large ditch, and that's, everything from Iron Gate goes into that ditch, and part of Old Union goes into that ditch. And pictures say a thousand words, well, she's right, when it, when it comes down heavy, there's a lot of water. And thanks to whoever put this in my door, all right, but I knew this, when you put up a structure, you got less square footage on the inside than you have in the roof. When it comes to water, that's where it comes from, comes off that roof. You put up a three-hundred-square-foot building, you're probably gonna have a four-hundred-fifty, five-hundred-square-foot roof. So, now you've increased that footprint in terms of the amount of water runoff, okay, and it's got nowhere to go. So, if you put, if you build a shoebox village, you can imagine what you're gonna end up with. And they're already using Pig Eye Creek to the max. I mean, there ain't nowhere else for it to go. Everything east of Diamond Mill Road goes to the river, it all goes east. And water, water finds its own level, it don't matter whose yard or whose basement it's in, it will find its own level. And when you talk to people, the glass is either half-full or half-empty, depending on how you want that glass to be, or on what side you're on. That's pretty much it. Anyway, gentlemen, thank you for your time, it's past my bedtime.
Thank you, sir. One more chance, is there someone who didn't get to speak? If you do, you know, we wanna give you the chance. One more thing. Okay.
I appreciate Ms. Hartman speaking, actually, our kids went to school together, this has been an issue for a long time, you know, I like her. What she said about the water drainage thing answered questions for me, I actually just talked to my brother the other day. We grew up in that house, we know the drainage issues, we know that our basement used to flood, something changed over the years. All of you be careful. My parents' basement flooded, you know, they started having health problems, my dad started having seizures, they were very healthy. The day of my dad's funeral, the basement flooded more than we've ever seen it, it knocked out the furnace. When he was dying, we discovered there was mold all over the house. We ended up having it tested, the mold levels above their bedroom were the highest, I mean, it was off the charts, because it was the dirt part of the basement. We didn't know, we couldn't see it down there, and you had a very wet spring, it spread through that house like wildfire. My mother ended up having problems, she went from being able to scale a fence, she ran out there, jumped over the fence, a year later, she could barely walk. We had every test under the sun, we went to Ohio State, we've had, mold is a difficult thing, watch for it. We spent over twenty thousand on the remediation alone, you have to do it properly, you gotta get a good testing, it is complicated, and it will kill you. It killed both my parents. It's, it's been horrible. Watch for it, we already saw some in ours, I watch like a hawk for it. And if you need help with some resources, if you have mold, I have them. That's all I wanted to say, it's, it's a horrible thing.
What is it?
Is this a donkey or is there still a chance that it will be?
We still have a, we still have a second reading. On all ordinances, we have two readings.
Tonight?
Not tonight, no. Uh, the next...
July twentieth.
Yeah, July the twentieth. I mean...
You have to take out a harmonica. You can't trust anybody else for yourself. Can you read his, what, what do you mean by that?
Uh, what we did, uh, what we did tonight, it, it's, it's the ordinance number and, and the language, yeah, and then we will vote again. Yeah. One more thing, that's it. I know you.
I know. All right, Alicia York, one-oh-six-three-five Haber Road, again, I wanna address Ms. Hartman. None of us are against you selling the land, you have every right, I get it, it's that time, parents get old, we aren't against it, one-hundred percent, I want you to know that. I honestly did not know it was up for sale until about a year ago when I saw the signs, and, like everybody says, we would love to buy it, but we can't buy that whole piece if we're willing to split it up. I have met many, 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 many people that are willing to split it up and buy it, and I would buy the three acres that's straight across from me and turn it into my hayfield. We would love to help you. It's not that we don't want you to sell it, so I don't want you to feel attacked that we don't want you to sell it, it's what is being brought in to be on it, and I know that's not something you can control either. So, I just want you to know, none of us are against you, it's a part of life, our parents get old, we have to do stuff, we don't want to. I also wanna say, I don't think any of us has ever thrown rocks, it's probably all from Iron Gate, 'cause it's a lot of a development, which we are bringing in now to do more of that. We would never throw rocks, because I have tractors, I have horses, and that would piss me off. So, I just want you to know, not one of us in here doesn't want you to sell the land. We, I did not know it was for sale, I can't do the whole thing myself. I bet you every single one of us in here would buy an acre, two acres, if not ten, and we will give you the money to sell it. We are there for you, 'cause that's what our community does. We've never been brought to this attention of all of this, and now we have all these people's attention, use it to your advantage. I know it's hard, and I know it sucks, 'cause your parents are getting older. That's why I bought my parents' house, and I built a spot where they can come home and visit me all the time. So, I get it, so I don't want you at all to think, we're upset, yes, we're upset, we're not upset at you, we're upset at choices people made not to help us put the right thing there.
As I said before, you know, to have two Ohio City apartments on the same road, owned by the same family, we would love to do that, however...
It's hard, it's expensive.
Just, I mean, just the equipment, you need to make that a hayfield.
Oh, I know. And my mom, my mom, I think, knew your in-laws is, who owned it, correct? Very well, and when, yes, and, I mean, they came up, Mom, I don't know if she did her teeth, she was dental hygienist, she literally knows everybody, so, you know my mom, and they always said, ride your horses over there, enjoy it.
Okay, you're stretching it out now, Alicia.
I'm sorry, enjoy it, I just want you to know, we're not mad at you, I apologize. You and I can talk later.
Thank you.
That's all right.
All right. So, the next item on our agenda is the council and mayor's comments, so, I'm gonna start with Mr. Lieberman, Dennis, any comments or...
Um, yeah, you know, I, I'm, obviously, you know, I'm the representative of the fourth, of the first ward, there's three wards in Clayton, there's about four thousand people in each ward, approximately, and I view it as my job to listen to what everybody has to say. Last meeting, I volunteered my cell phone number, some of you took it down, I asked you to invite me to your meeting if you were gonna have one, so we could have a meaningful discussion about all of this. It, it's more complicated than what I would ever imagine. The easiest thing for me to do would be to vote with what all of you in here, with the exception of a couple, may want to do, but that's not my job. My job, as I view it, is to do what's best for the entire ward and for the city of Clayton, and I have to listen to what all of you have to say, which I have, and I'm willing to interact with you anytime. But at the end of the day, I have to do what I think is right, not politically convenient, and that is what I'm gonna try to do. I've heard what you all have said, and from the first meeting on, it served as leverage to get them to reduce from a hundred and seventy houses down to a hundred and twenty-five. It, it redo, it helped to get them to change the structure on, on the road, so that there wasn't the mound in there anymore, because some of you raised some objections to the mound, which were legitimate, I thought. It also helps to get the, to define what the real issues are, and it seems to me the real issues are water, and traffic, and density. The density issue was, as I said, reduced from a hundred and seventy to a hundred and twenty-five. The water issue and the traffic issue cannot be dealt with until we approve what we have approved tonight. Then they have to do the studies, and at the end of those studies, if we're not convinced that that's the best thing for the city of Clayton, then I would vote against it. That's why we have these studies, and that's why we do what we do. We can't do those studies prior to this first meeting that we had. And I just want you all to know that I'm willing to listen to you, I mean, not agree with you. You may not agree with me, but I am listening, and I, I've listened from the very beginning, and as I said at the last meeting, I, I even counted how many people were making comments and what the major issues were. That's how I perceive my job, it's an analytical one, it's where I base it upon the facts, not just what I deem to be emotions, 'cause I wouldn't want this in my neighborhood either. But that's an emotional thing, and I have to do what's best, I think, for the city of Clayton and for the ward, and at the end of the day, if you don't think I did, then, yeah, you do, you have a right to vote me out if that's what you wanna do. But I just wanted to tell you what my reasoning is, how I do it, and if you do have a meeting, please, you have my cell phone number, I'll give it to you again, nine-three-seven-six-zero-four-one-seven-two-five. Call me, and I'll come and talk to you on a rational basis, and we'll talk about what's best. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Why don't you ask me afterwards, and...
Ms. Kelly?
Thank you for all the residents that came out the first time, and now, of course, all the residents that came out again. I've learned a lot, just by listening to you guys, and then Ms. Hartman too, as well, I understand why she's selling and why her family is. At the end of the day, too, without the Montgomery County Water and Soil Study, it can't be done if it doesn't happen. So, again, I appreciate you guys coming out, I wanna congratulate the two new Parks members as well, Chris Miller and Missy McDowell. So, they're really excited to work with the Parks, it's a great opportunity for them, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Merkel?
People think we take this for, for granted, and that it's an easy job to do, and I'm gonna tell you right now, it's not. If it was easy, this decision, this decision would've been made a long time ago, and we wouldn't be sitting here now. A lot of thought goes into this, a lot of rational, trying to figure out what's the best, the good and the bad, what direction to go, weigh out the pros and the cons, and try to come up with the best answer. And when you don't get the best answer, you try to fight to try to get things fixed or a better position. You know, I, am I happy with the aspects of, of something like this going in? It's, it's not my favorite. I like open spaces, and I tell people, I got Westbrook Park in my backyard, and the idea of someone coming in and, and putting in a, you know, a plot of homes between me and Shurri Lynn Drive was not the most desirable thing as I was growing up, there was that threat. The thing that saved it was Montgomery County coming in and saying they were gonna buy the land and put a park in, and deed it over to the Randolph Township at the time. I tell people also, my, I have a sister out in California, you know, California's had its problems, my sister lives out in the country, so I understand when you're talking about, you know, what you have as far as the peace and the quiet. She's been living out in this area and where she's at for the last forty years. The closest town is just not across the street from her, she's at the end of a, of a small lane on five acres, so I understand, you know, living out in the country on five acres. You know, going outside in your front yard, being able to see the stars at night, not being able to worry about traffic, nice and quiet, you know, not having that to have at your, at your disposal every, you know, every night, every day. or every day. I understand. I used to go out and visit her every day, and just think how great it was to be out there where she was at, as far as the open space. I understand. I lived in this area now for, my dad and I were talking about it, 54 years. And I grew up in this area. Used to ride my bike up and down the, out in the, the country roads, Putnam and, and Reinhardt and Old Mill. I wouldn't ride my bike out there anymore. Be taking my life in my hands. But I mean, yeah, I've, I've been out in that area. I mean, I've, I've ridden my bike, you know? You know, a bicycle on, on a, on a country road, people driving past you going 50, 55 mile an hour, and they don't care how close they are. I, you know, I've been out there. I, I know what it's like. I mean, no, I don't live there, but I understand. If it was easy, like I said, we wouldn't be still standing here or sitting here talking about this and trying to figure out where we're going. And it's not done yet. There's still things to be talked about and discussed, and fretted over by the time the next meeting comes around. So, it's not a done deal. We'll see what happens at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming, and wish you everybody a happy Juneteenth and a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I also want to thank everyone coming, for, for coming tonight. The only thing we were in agreement tonight was during the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, we tried to amend the agenda to let residents speak. It failed. I think some of us would have liked to hear you speak first. My philosophy is government is supposed to represent the people who elect the residents, and the residents clearly showed up tonight. But we had no resident speak in favor of this development. Good government represents people and listens to the residents. And I feel that we failed the residents tonight, unlike other governments who have said no to very similar developments, example, the one that I read during the remarks earlier. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bachmann?
Evening, everyone. There's a lot going on tonight. Obviously, we're around one big topic. For me, what it did come down to, you know, was I felt this was appropriate and the right thing to do. Whether that gets laughed at or not. I have, in the, I have at prior meetings, asked questions. It's on YouTube. I've dissected all of the comments from these three council meetings, as well as the Planning Commission meeting prior to them. Watch that on, on YouTube. We're not supposed to be involved in those meetings, and I feel it's inappropriate to even be in this, in the audience for that, as a council member. So, all those, I watch at home on TV. So, I've dissected and taken all of those comments, all, every which way they've, they've come, passionately, with tears. And I get it, it's where you all live. I've also dissected information that's come from, yes, the developer, and the city staff, who, I feel we have one of the best, best city staffs around. I trust their input and their judgment very much. And I take all that into account. I also take into account, you know, property rights, I believe, are a two-way street. What, when someone comes and asks for a rezoning of a property, whether it's a realtor, property owner, I take that extremely seriously for them and the surrounding, the surrounding properties around it. When I came on here, a lot of rezoning happened right around where I live. I live right off of Union Road on Summersweet, right by the driving range. Hunter's Path Development, literally right behind me. I had to, I've had to abstain from all of those votes, because it's an adjacent property. I would have voted for all of this, and that is with some neighbor's disapproval. So I've had to deal with that. And I live in something similar to this, if you're familiar with that neighborhood, and it's what's similar is going up. I say all this to say that, yes, I, I do take this seriously. And I've taken all the input in. And part of that is also taking, and this is the first time Ms. Hartman has, has come and spoke, never have spoken with you or any representative. The only representative has been Arbor Holmes. But I do take into account the rights of the property owner. And when they ask to rezone for a purpose, as, you know, I have to look at it as, as a government entity, you know, if we're going to turn that down, it has to be for a very good reason. And again, I felt this one was acceptable. Lot of you, I've, you know, this is one of the early times of knowing you. Some, as I said, I grew up with. I take all of that input equally and seriously. It's, the only thing I, I know that would probably make all of you happy is to say, "I'm gonna change my vote." I'm not gonna say that tonight. I felt it was appropriate, the way we did all this, of tabling it twice, to allow the developer and city staff to take back information presented by council, but also by many people who have attended the, the prior two meetings and the Planning Commission meeting, and also messages that we've received. That's where we're at. Maybe I'm not a good politician and, and up here lying to you, or anything. That's where we're at. So, you know, on, other than that, I guess, the last thing to wish everyone a Happy Independence Day. Say that at the meeting, that we voted to raise taxes. The irony of that, of course, we're putting it on the ballot. That's all I have, but thank you all for coming.
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of quick things. One, I want to recognize our staff. Kevin Schweitzer and Amanda, of course, and actually, the, the whole staff. I think it's more than just those two people, but we had noticed, was it today, just today? Yesterday, we had received another financial award. This is a government accounting, government accounting award by the Government Financial Officers Association for Distinguished Budget Award. And I think if nothing else comes out of this tonight, you know, you guys have to know that, that we've, we've won awards like this. I'm not taking credit myself, I'm, this is pure staff. But they have, gosh, I don't know, maybe 17 years in a row? Okay? Thirteen, thirteen, okay. Seems like 17. I, I think that's really, that's very rare, I think, that you would see that in a city our size. There's a, you know, you look around, all you have to do is watch the news, you see a lot of corruption, things like that. And I can personally tell you, I know these folks, and the, the state of Ohio recognizes also that we, we run a clean show financially here. So, I appreciate that. Congratulations to all of our staff for that, Kevin and Amanda, also. Just, I just have two quick questions. I think these might go to Jack. So, the last day or two, I've seen some early morning activity at the Roadstar. Are they ramping up now? And that's a, a business that's building, a new building. That's their national headquarters, over on Route 49.
So, Roadstar Trucking is a Canadian trucking company. They are relocating their US headquarters to, to the city of Clayton. We did sign off on their zoning permits earlier this week. They had received some foundation building permits earlier this year, so they're able to get started. They're in the process of getting the rest of their building permits approved. Right now, they're being reviewed by NIC. But, um, yeah, they're able to start moving dirt and to start that process. So, they're hoping to be, you know, going vertical here in, in the very near future.
I drive by there every day, and I keep waiting to see someone working there, and I actually saw two, two different days.
Yep.
So that's good. The la, the other thing I wanted to ask you, do you know, I'm gonna put you on the spot here, but do you know the timeframe for the demolition of the Laura's Loft buildings down on 48?
So, right now, they're doing the environmentals. It's part of the State of Ohio demolition project that's through all the different, various landbanks in the state of Ohio. The original grant project was supposed to be completed by the end of '23. The state of Ohio has actually extended it till the end of '24. However, what the Montgomery County Landbank has told me is that they believe that that structure's gonna be down by the end of this year. They just went in and started doing the environmental surveys last week, which is usually what they do, you know, a month or so before demolition. That's in a typical demolition project. This is a large, large-scale demolition project with thousands upon thousands of properties in the state of Ohio. But the landbank believes that it should be down, by, by the end of '23.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, just, uh, I, I wanna, normally, I don't try to point out people when we have large groups like this, but I do want to say to Ms. Hartman, I thank you for coming. I mean, frankly, I think it showed a bit of courage, you know, on your part to come here. You know, it's, you know, no one else here, you know, was on, you know, in your same frame of mind. And I think, of course, everyone's very respectful, and I definitely appreciate that. Again, I think that speaks to our people. And I just wanted to tell you, I thought it took courage to come up and speak. So I appreciate that. I'm not gonna say, you know, more than one minute worth of words to what we had tonight, because, truthfully, I don't want to try to patronize anyone. I hear you loud and clear. I heard you loud and clear at the other meetings. I come from a similar background myself, and I understand the emotions, and I understand, you know, frankly, being mad and being, you know, disappointed, things like that. I, I, you know, I think Dennis probably said it the best, better than I can say it, but, you know, we, we try to, you know, we, we want to listen to every individual in the city. We have a lot of people here, but we have to do what's best for the city in our minds at the end of the day. And that's why I voted for the project, because when you, again, when you're a city, if you're not growing, you, you have to grow. Because if you're not growing, you begin dying. And if you look at our own situation right here, so I just told you how great our financial department is and all that stuff, but, you know, we, we only have a couple of years left at the rate we are right now. And it doesn't mean we, we go out and we find everybody that we can, because we actually have, we actually have some traction now in some growth. You know, that's, that's just about all I can say. I, you know, I believe that we need to be very progressive. I've lived in Clayton my whole life, and to be regressive, man, I wish we could go back to the country, too. I really do. Because it was a great place to grow up. But it just, if we do that, we'll be out of money. I'm, I'm talking within a couple of years. Now, whether, you know, I don't know if this is the right thing or not. I hope it is. But if it's not, you know, then, I mean, yeah, you're right, we do live with it. Or, you know, the city lives with it. It's a big thing. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Can you take an action tonight? Because I, I mean, I, I've decided a number of times that I've heard it, but there's obviously a water issue out there.
Uh, we've...
On those country roads.
Yeah, I've got it.
It's affecting people that come across the street from this development, but, you know, this is nothing new. So what has the city done for the people?
Well, we're not gonna discuss or solve that now, but I've got that as an action point already. I've already got that set. And again, you know, we, we put, as a council, we put trust in people. I'm not a water expert. No one here is. I'm not a traffic expert, you know, I'm not the GO expert. We, you know, we rely on studies. Hey, are they on the, on the dole for another, someone else? I hope not. I mean, I hope they're, if that's the case, I hope they're out of business. I just got done telling you, we're vigilant on money. You know, we don't want fake results. We want real results. If it won't work, if that study comes back and says, "You know what? If you build this, it's gonna be worse," then I can tell you, we're, we're, we're doing one of two things. We're either canceling, like, just like Arbor said, or we're go, we will go back to the drawing board, try and do something that will work. Same with traffic, same with the GO. These are things we do not take lightly. Again, like Mr. Lieberman said, this is like way more complicated than we've, than you see up there. Anyone can draw the map. Well, well, again, you know, we, we hope that we're dealing with good business partners, and we have to put trust in other partners.
That's right.
Yeah, there, there, there is no, there's no, there's no zero. Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
You two know this happens all the time, probably, in your business, that people use appraisers or home inspectors that are on their tape. You and I know this. Everybody in this room knows this.
Well, I think that's a lot...
If we don't have an independent person doing these studies, then how are we sure that, that it's transparent? Because it's not, because they're gonna be in their pocket.
Well, I, you, Joe, you have, Joe has a lot more negative or pessimistic view of, of working with partners than I do. I, I, I do trust our folks. And I trust these guys right here. I trust our development department to vet these folks. And if they're, if it's bad, hey, you know, then we, we don't use them.
I would mind if my family's, my family's...
Yeah, I understand. And we, and we will do that. Alicia, one more time.
My question was to...
I got it.
You have that development on telephone, and you don't know what's...
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
My friend's album is backed up against that on Clint.
What?
They were continuing on throwing dust up the ground now. There you are.
This is something we, this specific thing is, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we probably need to discuss that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
If you see the stuff that you guys have, and we were the ones that had to address the fact that, now they have a 10-foot rise, you can't even see the street, because the street is out of it.
Well, it makes sense what you're saying, but I, I have no idea of the situation, so...
But I'm worried about, I don't...
We'll, we'll vet, we, I promise you that we will vet the people that are looking at these things. And that's our jobs, and that's all those guys over there's jobs.
It's hard to...
I understand. I understand.
I just want everybody to be aware of their fault.
I understand.
We know what happened.
Guys, if, my, my cellphone, I'm not gonna shout it out now, but I'm like super easy to find. If you want, if you need anything, you can call me. I do work third shift, and by the way, I'm supposed to be at work right now. But they, I do work third shift, so I don't always, I mean, if you leave a message, I probably won't get it until the afternoon, just giving you a heads up on this. You know, another takeaway, I, I took out a, a takeaway about the water, the, the soil and water condition, and also the communication. You know, we'll talk and see what we can do. I can tell you, we're, we're probably, because we have the financial director in the room, we're probably not gonna be sending snail mail out to people. It's just not efficient, and it's not, it's not costly. So, we need to, you know, we'll work on this. We heard it several times, so we'll work on this to try to get the communication better. We're not, we are not trying to slide something through. We, we have advertised it, you know, again, our numbers are pretty, pretty easy to find. You can call us direct. I, I can't speak for everyone, but Dennis has spoke, and I've spoke for myself. So, that's all I'm gonna say for tonight. I do appreciate everyone coming, and I appreciate everyone being respectful. This is, it's a tough thing for, you know, not only for you, but for us and for the staff also. And I just want to say, thanks for coming, and thanks for caring, and, and everybody have a good night, okay?
Before I move to adjourn, I'd just like to point out that our meetings are on television. For those of you who don't use email or, or computers, whatever, we're on television. For those of you who don't use email or, or computers, whatever, we're on television four times a week, every week. So you can find out that way. And with that, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.